The bond 2023 update. And I really not only believe the board is going to be pleased to see it, but hopefully the community as well. And of course, we're grateful for their support. And then we have Ms. Polanski will be doing academic update. I'm going to ask for a minute or two to kind of set that up before she goes. And before we go, I'm really happy to report that our girls golf team, back to back state champions in state champions in division one golf. Had the pleasure of going there. Mr. Samalski was there as well on Saturday and they're just amazing. And I'll give you one quick example of how amazing the mindset of these women are. So, well, first they won by 29 strokes. So if you know anything about golf, like that's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. But one young lady, Ms. Gill, shout out out there, Ms. Gill. So I'm watching her and she goes up on one hole, three putts to the green. And, you know, could very easily be frustrated. But our coaches are so good at just moderating. And I know you worked with one of them, Meredith. And she comes back and I watched the next tool and she bombs her drive 30 yards past everyone else, sticks the next shot within three feet of the pin and taps it in for a verdi. Like the whole prior didn't even happen. And into me like that is when you look at kids having their opportunity to shine and to be in a moment like that and to be able to kind of wipe away any of it. And one of the things that head coach Kate Schultz did is she actually took advantage of our mentally strong Mustang program. In the middle of the season, there was a little bit of turbulence and worked with our MSM to help the team become more cohesive and in kind of get in a better headspace. So that was a real joy and and I can't leave here tonight without just saying what a wonderful moment that was. And our community public schools provide moments very much like that every day. So that was great. And I know right now, though, we have Mr. Kling and Mr. Banchero to highlight our bond work.
Yes, absolutely. So as you may or may not know, we have work going on throughout the district in our bond work. And so again, we have Steve Banchero here to kind of walk us through the bond update. When Steve and I meet periodically and, you know, in those meetings, we talked about updates to the board and how, you know, the cadence of those updates and you know, most of the work's done throughout the summer. So we thought, well, maybe in the fall, we have an update to the board. And depending on if there's work done in the winter, we would do another one in the spring. Again, depending on what's kind of being done. So this is the fall update. I will say there's Steve put together 45 slides. So in an effort to respect, yeah, so buckle up. But in an effort to kind of respect, you know, the presentation, maybe jot down, if you do have questions, jot them down and then we'll kind of address them at the end. So that we keep the presentation flowing, if that makes sense. All right. So Steve.
Thank you. I'd like to start off and acknowledge the efforts by our bond team. The consultants are up there. Auk is our construction manager. Forsight specializes in athletic field design. Smalling is our civil engineer. Nicole Planters is our owner's rep. TMP is our architect of record. Wright Hunter is the technology consultant for the district and Peter Basso is our mechanical electrical engineer. So without these folks, a lot of these things can't happen. And they've been partners here in the district from well before my time here in the district. So we value them as a partner in this process. So I know you folks had a the copy of the slide deck before, so I'm going to try to go quickly through these. I know, but just recapping for 2024, those projects listed, we completed 2025. We concentrated on the turf field, LED lighting, playgrounds at Amerenman, Thorpe Creek and Ridgewood, transportation paving, and we did another section of rough at the high school. So just a couple of highlights there. That's the baseball and softball fields. They turned out fantastic. I know that was a big upgrade the teams were looking for for a long time. Most of you have probably visited the stadium, seen that upgrade that was 2024. The playgrounds, you know, that's a lot of more tactile impact on the elementary school up front. We choose those to do those up front so we can get some work done at the buildings quickly. And it should be noted, this is the first time I think Northville has funded these through bond program, through bond proceeds. So that is a big change. In the past, they were funded by PTAs or when the building was originally built, the district would install that those features. But any upgrades from the original construction that was really community fundraised and installed. So we took a little turn in this bond and we actually funded some new pieces, which is great. So getting into what we did at Amerenman for 2025, we completed the office addition steam room, roofing, playground equipment and miscellaneous upgrades in the classroom. We're currently finishing up the cafeteria addition, converting the multi-purpose room to the media center. And next year, we'll get to actually be repaving the rest of the lot. So our timeline is we're on track to occupy the addition in 2025 or November, in a couple of weeks, actually. So that's coming along well. We're doing our final inspections, arranging for file cleaning, getting ready to actually move whatever equipment we have in the old cafeteria into the new one. So that work is underway. And then once that's done, we'll start converting the existing cafeteria back to the media center. So that's picture of the new addition with the canopy. That's an old photo of, I think it was the 60s. One of the previous teachers there had a box of slides he gave to me. I had a slide scanner. I scanned them all in. There's some great photos of the old building.
Actually, it looks like the building last summer. I mean, the building hadn't changed much, really.
Well, not from the front entrance, that's for sure.
Front entrance.
That's a window unit air conditioner?
I'm not even sure if they had air conditioning.
No, we did. I don't think we did. Maybe she got.
Well, no, there's like a little window.
The principal got it. That's about it.
That's it. Got it.
So in some interesting changes there. This is the steam room. And when I was going through the slides, the old photo, this is from 1967.
Wait, is that a kid with like a screwdriver like cartoons used to have? I mean, a drill?
What's, yeah, that's.
This is awesome.
I'm sure we might have those tools somewhere still in the district. You know, it's good to see that the curriculum has come back to, you know, some more hands-on approach tools and some other technology. But the steam space is great. You know, it's lively. It's colorful. It's it's a great place. It was a nice conversion. This one is actually pretty near and dear to my heart because before I was actually employed with Northville Public Schools, I was a Amerenman dad. And my first introduction to Northville Amerenman was the courtyard. So the dance club would do updates and we would do work around Amerenman. And one summer, my first summer, we came in and we tried to clean up the courtyard, which was nothing but weeds about as tall as I am. And it's always been something difficult because it's hard to maintain. It's hard to get to. It's just a lot of work. It's a big courtyard, actually. So this has always been a a project in mind that the Amerenman community wanted and deserved. And actually, I remember Marco Morando, previous principal.
Yes, yep.
So I sent him pictures of this because this was always something him and I would always go back and forth on is the courtyard. So he was quite jealous of the final product.
Looks so awesome.
Yeah, we still have the, there's a pergola that goes to the center. We're going back and forth the design and the contractor of that. So that's yet upcoming. But for the most part, it's substantially complete. Correct.
I'm going to put Amerenman on my next visit list.
This is, there are some photos of the cafeteria addition in progress. Like I said, we're weeks away from occupying this space. All right. This is the office addition at Amerenman. If you've been in the office at Amerenman, it was very small, probably the smallest office in our district. And so we did an appropriate addition. The principal's office got a little larger. There's a larger conference room and a kind of a relaxation room that they can use for children when they need some regulatory environment. Those are examples of, they don't call it Chillville. I'm not sure if they've named it. There you go. And there's the principal's office. Meads Mill for 2025, we did paving, classroom windows, bathroom renovations, exterior staining, common area renovations. Looking ahead, there's a lot more work to do at Meads. This is really almost a 24 month project. So we're looking at finishing the canopy, the steam addition, beginning first quarter of '26. Then we transition into renovating the kitchen and cafeteria that starts this winter. And then next year is a heavy mechanical replacement year at that building and then finishing up the cafeteria and kitchen work. So if you've been by Meads Mill, you see the canopy and the progress as that goes. So we're working on that second shift on weekends. This was a big transformation. Everyone remembers the locker rooms, what they used to look like. And we took up locker space and made it an open inviting space and we're pushing the lockers to corridors and perimeter. That was a big change there. You know, it was, you couldn't see, the vision was tough. This is a much more inviting space, really at the core of the building, too. The bathrooms, we've renovated all the bathrooms. Meads Mill had, you know, some very institutional looking bathrooms. And these are a big improvement for the building and the staff. We did some upgraded finishes, the fishbowl. And you really can't see the steam addition because it's in the back of the building, but this is some progress photos. The picture on your right is the corridor, which it's going to be interesting with the Meads Mill addition. This corridor is really going to connect the two pods when you come in the front entryway, where they have the kind of semi circular couches. And then everyone calls it the E pod or the seventh grade pod, kind of in the back of the building. Well, that corridor is going to connect those two spaces and it's going to really change the circulation at Meads, I think, for much improved experience. All right, getting into some of the work coming up. So we're entering a very busy time at Meads Mill. The amount of work in the kitchen and cafeteria is not something that can be done in the summer. By no stretch of the imagination. So what you see is we're going to set up a temporary kitchen serving area in the areas in green or not green and orange. So we're actually taking half of the gym, turning that into a serving area. There's old locker rooms that we're currently renovating to turn it into a temporary serving area. And then once those are established around February, we're going to start renovating the kitchen and the cafeteria. So we're kind of taking that whole function and we're sharing it with the gym. I know it's going to be kind of a difficult time for the building, but again, this is the amount of work we're doing is not something you can do in, you know, a very short summer. So the staff has been good working with, you know, both food service, the principal. I know the gym teacher's not a huge fan of it, but we're going to make it through. So you know, it's temporary pain for long-term gain.
You're hearing a little pain from Parks and Rec, I think, too, but.
There is because they use, they use that gym quite a bit during basketball season, especially in the winter months. So that is, you know, it is putting a little crimp in there because we rent that to them almost every weekend. High school mechanical work this summer, we did plumbing fixture replacements. We did a vertical unit ventilator installation, the new wing upgrades to air handlers and chillers and interior spaces. Upgrades of mechanically units, neck and wings and boilers. We're not quite done with that work. We're still programming building automation systems. We're doing some retrofits of terminal units, air water balancing and functional commissioning. But there's new boilers. There's, yes. Not exciting for, not a lot of touch and feel, but it's good to get new equipment in that building. At the right is a new air handling unit that serves the center core of the new wing on the first floor. The chiller that serves that same unit and some pumps and circulation equipment. The vertical unit ventilator is the item on the left. So it's a long story, but the the new wing, when it was built, tapped into the existing system, the engineers, you know, always had the new wing in mind when the building was built. But we've always, way before I got here, always struggled with heating and cooling that end of the building because it really added onto a very large system. The air handlers that serve like the core academic classrooms, each one of them that's bigger than this one. They're in the center core of the building and imagine we're pushing it all the way to the east end. So we divorced that system from the original construction and put vertical unit ventilators in those classrooms to kind of lighten the load on the original system and improve heating, cooling in the.
And Steve, I think that was a real pro move because the other great thing about those units is if one were to go down, we can repair that and get after it. And the rest of the rooms are not impacted.
Right.
Because it's an each room piece. And I know talking to students and staff and some parents that that newer end of the building was really not that comfortable a place to be a student or a teacher.
So now we're getting into phase two projects. High School Edition renovation, the Marine Edition renovation. We're going to start off with the high school, another big project. We're doing a steam addition, art room renovation, classroom carpet and paint, making office carpet and paint, auditorium seats, auditorium, audio visual upgrades, addatory renovation, gym bleachers and robotics renovation. So quite a bit of work happening in the high school over the next couple of years. Bids are actually due tomorrow, so it's going to be a big milestone in our process. We're coming to the board in November for bid award. It might take two meetings because of the sheer number of bids, big categories, I should say. So probably come November, maybe in December. We're looking to start that project in March of next year. The project's broken up into two summers. The first summer, heavy emphasis on the second floor. Finishes, paint, so flooring and paint. Why we've broken up into two summers is just, there's a lot of classrooms. There's a lot of square footage to replace carpet. Just imagine moving all that furniture. We have to strategically move it out of the classrooms and replace the carpet and move it back. That just takes a lot of coordination. Just getting the old carpet out of the building. Just imagine all those bundles of old carpet trying to get out there. So we actually have to take windows out. We do ductile shoots so we could just drop it right out the window. So this is summer 2026, second floor. Also next summer, 26 gym bleachers. Spring and summer, the natatorium, auditorium work in summer 26, office and the art rooms. In the meantime, we're going to start the steam addition in the winter. So we start with foundations, some utilities, structural work, that sort of stuff. And that would be complete December of '26. And then summer '27, we come back and we finish the classrooms, finishes, carpet, paint, that sort of stuff. Here's some renderings of the addition. We, it took a lot of different, I think this might have been option Z as far as what that addition would look like modeled on the front of that building because it's a very unique building and we didn't want to necessarily take away from the building itself. And then it's hard to put an addition on a building that's unique like this. It's not a box. There's some courtyard spaces for the steam rooms where, you know, students could come up, you know, whether they're in those classrooms that are other classrooms, it's opportunities to get outdoors and, you know, do some engineering, do some experiments, doing some art, whatever. You know, it's good outdoor space. This is kind of a common corridor between the two educational areas, steam addition. Again, breakout space for collaboration, you know, thoughtful work outside of the classroom environment. Here's a rendering of one of the educational spaces. I know I'm going fast, but I got a lot. So Moraine, another exciting project, steam addition. Again, all the buildings are getting steam classrooms. What those look like, if they're addition or interior in the space, that will really depend on the building. At Moraine, it is an addition. We're doing some work with the cafeteria and multi-purpose room, exterior canopy, miscellaneous interior upgrades, boiler replacement, HVC equipment upgrades, electrical switchgear and pavement. Bids are due on that project in December and bid award January '26. And we're going to start construction in June of '26. Again, the work there is way too much to do in the summer. In this particular building, while we're working in the kitchen and cafeteria space, they're going to be eating their classroom. Again, this is not the most ideal situation, but again, we cannot do the amount of work anticipated in this building in that kitchen area without this sort of accommodation. It's commonplace in a lot of construction projects, things like this. So you know, when we sit down with Joe and Kerry and staff and talk about like, how are we going to do this? It's funny because we like, oh, we did that during COVID. We can do that. You know, a lot of like how we're getting into the building, how we're operating the building with spaces are actually, they did a lot of it during COVID. So the addition goes out front, the cafeteria teaching kind of getting expanded again. This building has had, let's see, from the original construction, one, two, three, four, five additions since it was originally built. So now we're doing another one. And this is, you can see each time the addition is put out, it took it a little different direction. So exciting project in Moraine. Elevation of the addition as it goes out front with the canopy. We couldn't get windows in the cafeteria. We tried really hard. It just with the existing wall line of the structure, it just wasn't possible. So we are going to brighten up that space as much we can with painting finishes and lighting. That's actually the steam addition that goes out front.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that's what it will look like in the inside. So we're revisiting the entry to the right would be the main entry. You're going to kind of come in and curve into, not curve it, but transition into the corridor. If you go straight down the doors in front of you, when I actually go into the steam room and the doors on your left go to the cafeteria. You know, you have to get, I mean, this was option four or five as we're looking at trying to design this thing. So again, existing buildings constructed in the late 50s, they're difficult, you know, it's had, you know, six additions or whatever it was. They're difficult to put another addition on and try to keep cohesive. So we are enhancing the cafeteria and kitchen in that building. If you've been in that building, that kitchen is really a closet. I would swear most of us probably have closets bigger than that kitchen. So we're trying to improve that flow and that experience. Just getting on to roofing. Again, you know, that was a big part of the bond. Just 2024, what we did was Amerenman High School and Technology and Operation Buildings '25, we did more at Amerenman and then another section at the high school. And then in '26, we're looking at a little bit at Moraine, Silver Springs. '26, '27 might be a little bit at the high school and then just miscellaneous repairs and replacements. '27, another phase of Moraine, another phase at Meads, '28. A final phase is Winchester, Silver Springs, another phase, Ridgewood. Again, these roofing projects, we try to time them and offset them with construction because the sheer amount of work, we don't want to overwhelm each project by trying to do too much. So we do it in sections. We work with our roofing consultant. I'm trying to work around the construction. This, the slides for Andrew, there was a big tech part of the bond. '23, Wi-Fi, '24, you know, interactive flat panels, '25. You guys could read all those things, but what he's looking at '26 is fiber infrastructure project getting really on the way with boots on the ground, phone systems, which the board awarded, network server switches, technology for Winchester Silver Springs. '27, we're looking at upgrades to our access alarm systems, network firewall and '28, another Chrome and laptop refresh. So that's the cadence that was anticipated. You know, every once in a while we shift things around or Andrew shifts things around and but for the most part, that's what the original plan was. Next phase, Winchester Silver Springs. We just kicked off design meetings on those. We'll complete about this time next year and anticipated construction in spring of '27 start. And then the last phase, Thorpe Creek and Ridgewood. We'll start design fourth quarter '26, bidding '27, construction '28. So I know this is really hard to read, but it goes back to the original timeline and schedule we put together. I just drew a line where we're at October 2025 today. Just again, we're kind of, we developed a plan and for the most part, we're sticking to the plan. I think the biggest deviation from the original plan, what you would have seen the first time is the construction at the high school. We're going to try to do that over one calendar year. And it just talking with, we had a lot of good conversations with, especially with flooring contractors, just the sheer amount of carpet in that building to remove and replace it. They really recommended we try to break it up to get more competitive bids at a realistic timeframe. So we took that schedule and stretched it over two years just because of the sheer amount of work.
Yeah, I'm impressed that like it's literally like the midway point.
Right.
Is it the midway? It looks, I guess maybe it is. It goes to, I was.
Oh, that's fair. It goes to.
I would guess that it goes to 2029.
Yeah, not midway.
So this is a bit quick.
Yeah.
So I know that was really fast. I appreciate everyone's holding questions at the end so we can kind of go through it. I know there's a busy agenda left to do, there's more important things. But I'd love to answer any questions.
There's nothing more important than infrastructure.
That's what I was going to say, like we can't educate.
Teaching learning, maybe, I mean.
Can't happen. Yes, we have a safe and healthy space for our kids, you know.
So this is foundational. You know, I'm kind of an old school hangover from the time that we struggled with COVID back in the day and we stressed about air quality and air handling and do we, you know, we had to compensate for gaps maybe by spreading kids out. But now moving into the current situation is we've got global warming, we've got other issues about heating and cooling demands. And that's kind of where I'm going in air filtration. So what I would just say is that, you know, we continue, parents and the community continue to be quite concerned about the health of the air temperature and cleanliness in our buildings. And and we're getting more complicated in our buildings. We've got more maybe ambient kinds of sources of contamination, you know, from, you know, fancy steam rooms or, you know, other kinds of places, maybe the arts where we are using, you know, you know, equipment that might be, you know, releasing toxins into the air anyway. So I'm just making a plea that we're doing, we're meeting the top end expectations for the EPA for air handling in schools.
There's code requirements. We look at those and, you know, one of the things when we're we anticipate the work, you know, the new systems are, you know, the current code requirements are quite stringent as far as air exchanges and filtration compared to, you know, 15, 20 years ago. So we're that is definitely something that we have in our forefront of every design when it comes to mechanical systems.
It's wonderful. Seems like I heard that we were kind of saddled with some old time systems during, you know, the COVID concerns with particulate matter and virus particles and all the rest of that stuff that maybe we had to, you know, we talked about putting, you know, freestanding units in classrooms to try to, you know, bump up the air filtration. But we're not in that. We're through that and beyond and now meeting all of that.
Correct. And that's a big part of Meads next summer, Winchester Silver Springs. Those air handling systems and things that move air were our originals of the building from 1975.
Right, I know.
Those are big, big parts of those projects, for sure.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for, to the community for enabling us to do that. And it's not going to go away. It's only going to get enhanced with climate. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for, to the community for enabling us to do that. And it's not going to go away. It's only going to get enhanced with climate change and heat. And, you know, we've got a landfill that sits right on the border of one of our schools and I know those parents are very concerned also about their kids' health and health, we need healthy kids to be able to learn. So, thank you very much, Steve, for that. Appreciate it.
I had a couple, hopefully, quick questions. On the high school, I'm curious how many of the classrooms got those new units? Do you know off the top of your head?
Twenty-two.
Yeah. They did, they look pretty big. Did it like take up a significant amount of, you know, workspace?
About three by three. So, I mean, from a form factor, they don't really get much smaller.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's the downside of putting the unit in the classroom, in the educational space. But you're kind of constrained as far as what you can do from a D, a centralized system, because we would have had to pretty much take all out the interior classroom core to put mechanical equipment in a space and then duct it out.
Yeah.
So, it's a somewhat common solution when you run into these sorts of design parameters. So.
And then, can you flip back to, I think I, on mine, it was page thirty of your, the, the rendering a little bit further of NHS with the, that. One more, the map part of it?
Yep.
Yes. So the green part is the steam addition. Is that taking out parking spaces then?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
So in a subsequent phase down the road, again, there's an anticipated adding some additional parking, but it would probably be twenty-eight, twenty-nine when we get to that one.
Okay.
We'll see how the rest of the projects come in from a budget perspective. We designed some things for additional parking, knowing that, you know, we want to plan for something additional down the road. We didn't put in this project for a couple of different reasons, budget being one of them.
Well, and wasn't it part of the, the, one of the phases was paving, right? So you went, was it that one? Oh, never mind then, sorry.
Where would that additional parking go?
I know.
Uh, let's see if I have. Yeah, I don't have a site plan. As you come, the east entrance, as you go past the main parking lot and you're going toward the ball fields, there's a row there, we could do parallel parking. And then we came up with a design, currently we have it by the baseball field fenced off with construction laydown area. We'd actually push into that area, kind of square it out and add parking over there.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully the parallel parking would be for the staff because
Correct.
The kids are already like bad enough in that parking lot. I would hate to.
Practice it. I haven't parallel parked in years.
That's true.
I'm sorry, it would be parallel to the driveway.
Okay. I don't know if I want any teenagers out there trying to parallel park.
It's part of the driver's test.
It is. It's the one most people fail.
Very true.
But as you get it, so, you know where the crosswalk is?
Yeah.
It would be a row pointed west, it'd be a row of spots there on both sides of that, but it would be for staff. So, you know, they can park there, go to the crosswalking that into the building. So they would free up some more spots for staff or students. But again, for a couple of different reasons, you know, we're thinking about delaying that till we see how the rest of the projects come in.
I know we've had a lot of meetings about this addition and parking, it was always one of the,
Yeah.
because there's not a lot of space on the high school site. So,
It's pretty crowded.
How many spots are we losing? Was it always in the back of Tony's mind?
I'm curious to know in the rendering, sorry, we all, okay. Um, since we're on the high school, I know we had talked about during the bond meeting that the steam group, particularly the robotics team, wanted that like large door that would open. Are we able to, is that part of that drawing?
Yeah, for the steam addition.
Yeah.
Yes, for the space out front, there's a lot of overhead doors, a lot of bigger spaces. Really, in the final plan, robotics is going to get that whole back area, you know, that's kind of shared between robotics and instruction right now.
Yeah.
Once the new area opens up front, that back area we're remodeling, it's going to be, I don't want to say dedicated to robotics, but it's going to be more purposeful.
For that.
Yeah, we take in one of those classrooms, expand the area. So, they get more space out of the project.
Okay. And is that where the tall door will be or that's?
We're replacing that set of doors that enter there too.
That makes sense. Okay, cool. Amazing.
I was wondering about Moraine. I love the stain on the outside of Ammerman and I was wondering if Moraine's going to get the same treatment?
We did, at that project, we did not anticipate that. So they purposely, you could see from the renderings, found a brick that matched. So, it's not something we talked about with the Moraine community.
I just wanted to mention something that you started, which was how thankful, this just brings to mind for our community that they supported this so that we can make these upgrades. It's really nice and fun to see them in action and see all this happening and that wouldn't be possible without the community's support. So.
Right. It was overwhelming support. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were lucky.
I do have one question. I'm sorry, you've been waiting. No, you go ahead.
So, go.
Okay. Um, the Moraine, when you mentioned that, you know, there's going to be some disruption with the food prep update and the kiddos are going to eat in their classrooms.
Yep.
How are the teachers supported then as far as like, are they in there? And maybe we don't even have an answer for this yet, but are there people like in there to give them like their lunch or do the teachers stay in there and?
I think that's a lot of the details that Joe and his team are working out.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I, no, I love everything that's been done. I went to Ammerman for the open house and that steam room is just amazing. I love the rolling tables and how much space they got to work with there and that Ms. Coddill has an actual office instead of a hallway to that mini conference room. So that's, that's actually really nice. Likewise, at Meads, I love everything inside, but especially as a parent that goes there every day, I love the canopies on the outside is so amazing. Except for when it rains. When, when is the roofing supposed to be done on those canopies? Do we, do we know a timeline of that?
Probably by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, okay. Great. Okay. Um, that's awesome. And then, next week, Brian from OCH is taking the Meads administration on a tour through the construction of the new steam unit. Mr. Lambden invited me to go and he wanted me to let you all know if you're available when, next week, Wednesday at nine AM. If you just show up and,
At the Moraine?
At Meads. And you can go in there. It's, the ground is quite, it's dirt. So depending on the weather, it may be muddy. So, you may want to wear some, some boots and not some nice shoes. But he wanted you to.
I can't wear my high heels, which I don't own anymore.
You could try. I've never been in these. I don't notice like.
That's the twenty-ninth?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Sweet. I've been wanting to, yeah, get in there.
Go to the last slide, the timeline. So this is important because as you know, we're coming up to the third series of this, of this bond. So, every series you kind of look at it like a baton toss as you're spending down those funds. And it's always important to kind of look at, okay, where these projects came in above or under budget and see when that ton toss is going to happen and how we're looking and if we need, you know, utilized sinking funds. That's always a conversation we're having. So as we move on, I think we're on schedule to price the bonds in April. So, we'll be in the spring when those bonds are sold. And so, just keep that in the back of your mind where, you know, they're always trying to like keep this flow going undisturbed. So, and then, any other questions? Sorry.
Are you going to invite involved students again with?
With.
The sale of the bond.
Uh, yeah, I, I think that would be a cool thing. I know last time I think Brody, when he was at Stiefel did it during the bond sale.
It was very fun to be there for that.
Yeah, I think RJ and I met with them and I think that's something they're willing to do again.
Yeah, awesome.
It was a really good experience. For, for me, it was something that I had never, it was a world that I was totally unfamiliar with. And to, to be able to learn from everyone that was in that room along with all the high schoolers, I think I was there with the high schoolers going, what? I did every day. You know, in some of the parts, they knew more than I did about what was happening. And I was like, well, clue me in because I don't get it. So, that was really awesome.
Yeah. So I think that's something we can plan on again in twenty twenty-six.
And then before you go, so interestingly, Kim, one of the things that I've been looking at is indoor air quality. And if you Google search some studies over the past three to four years, air purification in classrooms, you have to look at the cost of the unit, unfortunately, the filters and electricity and all that. Anywhere from a ten to a fourteen percent reduction in student absences in the classrooms that they use those on. So I thought that was intriguing. But most importantly for now, you know, Steve, I've had the pleasure of the past few years of being in your presence when you've run every two weeks, meetings with OCH, La Cole and TNP. And this community, if they don't know, how grateful they should be for how on point you are with not only spending but quality of work being done. Hopefully more people, if they see you walking down the street or Center Street Grill, will give you a high five or something because genuinely amazing. And then I'd also like to thank Devon Caddell and her team, Will Lambden, Brad O'Neill, Melissa Provo, Tony Kosky, Joe Reiman, Kerry Morfino. These are all people who have been in countless meetings. When Steve talks about iteration Z, he's not kidding. And that means that all the people that I just named were in every part of this design process for their buildings and they included folks in there. So the amount of, we can, we see the finished product, but the behind the scenes part of it, BTS if you will, is very impressive. So thank you very much. And to all of our administrators and teachers and in everybody, I mean, you're talking picking finishes for chairs. I mean, it goes on and on and on. It doesn't stop. So, thank you very much. And somebody made the comment, it's really cool when you're standing in the Ammerman cafeteria, what will be, and you look across the hillside, the design components that they, they kind of mirrored.
Kind of mirror, right?
It is a really neat effect. And then the work that Gertley did on that other side of the road and clearing out all of that. What you did by taking out all the junk that used to be and blocking basically Eight Mile, it's really, really turning into a great thing.
Some great improvements.
I didn't want to turn this into a Steve love fest, but I also wanted to say thank you to Steve. Just from a industry standpoint, it's not very often you have someone like Steve who has the operation and the construction expertise to kind of go hand in hand. And so, in an other district, you might have a construction manager here presenting what you want to hear, but here you have someone who's on the team who can tell you how it is and how valuable that is, not only to me and Dr. Weber, but also the board. So, just a big shout out to Steve and all the hard work he does with this project.
And being that Ammerman dad, that's a very unique and rare thing to have somebody who knows our district so well, taking care of our district.
Yes.
What more are we whacking in there?
Hope not. That was a long day. Yeah, no, it's a pleasure to serve the community where my, you know, obviously my children go to school and where I live. So, yeah, it's a pleasure.
We're lucky to have you, for real, right? That, all the years of work before this to get us to this place that we can do this and do this well is really awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right.
Here you go.
So, part of that, for some folks know that my, actually, my background growing up was a skilled trade. So, I love the report that Steve just did. I love being in those meetings. Devon and I went up to Winchester to take a look at where they're going to be replacing a lot of the HVAC. And as Steve said, it's all originals, fifty years old. And so Devon and I were up there and just from an energy efficiency standpoint and so on, but when we think about we're spending around, I think, eight million dollars per building at Winchester and at Silver Springs, but three million in each of those buildings will be focused on the HVAC infrastructure. It's, it's really, really, really old, really inefficient. And we might not necessarily see it. We're happy to take any of you up there anytime you want. So, but the other part of me that's a bit of a nerd is what Ms. Polanski is going to get into right now, which is our Northville academic report. What I'm going to ask the board to do right now, before Emily gets started, is if you could please turn to, it'll say custom peer group. I believe it's the second page, the back of the second page. So oftentimes, you've heard me reference our, our peer districts. When we look at data from a state and aggregate standpoint of across the state of Michigan, I'm concerned or interested in looking at districts that are similar to our district in economic profiles and so on. Taking a victory lap on school districts that are impoverished, who don't have the resources we do, to me is intellectually lazy and actually, I think it's unethical. So the standard that we put ourselves up against are the schools that you see there. I'm going to have Megan make a full page copy of this one for you and perhaps the next board meeting, I'll just get it for, I know a lot of you have your board folders that you come to every meeting. So when Emily or I are talking about peer districts, you'll know who we're talking about. And Emily will talk about that in the presentation. The other piece, and Karen, you asked me this, I think, maybe six weeks ago, how are we doing on the growth model of building that? So, I intentionally asked this school board to evaluate me partially based on a growth model for our students and and I've explained the why behind that on a number of occasions. A high achievement district can often hide behind that achievement while not attending to each child. So, that's the move that we're currently making. And my evaluations in December, and Karen, you'd asked like, where will we be in that part of the system? This is really the beginning of it. What I promised you is that you would have evidence of us going towards building that. And so this presentation is going to show you a little bit on that as well. We're in the transition from NWEA to iReady. Had a powerful conversation about iReady at our superintendent's meeting on Friday in Wayne County and also found that they have a dyslexia screener within iReady that is outstanding. So that's, and more to come on that from Emily because that's really good news. But as we look at our data, the way that Emily has went through it, I think makes it, which is the essential part of where we want to get as a school district. I want to be able to put a dashboard up or give somebody a report that you don't have to be a spreadsheet wizard or a statistician to deeply understand. We want to make it transparent, accessible and powerful. And already, and Meredith, you spoke to this, I think, last week or maybe the week before, when you got the home report from iReady and you're like, I can understand this, this makes sense. You can sit down with your husband and say, we can both understand this. You're not thinking all sorts of esoteric scores and things like that. What you want to know is how your son is progressing, is he going to grow? So keep that in mind through this presentation. So as we make that transition from, from NWEA to iReady, we also used frankly, and I don't think I hid my, I don't want to call it displeasure, but I, I didn't, I never hid my frustration with the, the lengthy multi-cell report that we did. You know, Emily has reconstructed that to the best of her ability. But how actionable is something like that? How can a data team, I mean, Karen, if you have fifty minutes for a prep in your job and you want to get together and just look at things like, those pieces are what we're thinking. And you've heard me use this example a billion times, like the Betamax VHS aspect. Like what we want to do is to build something that is eminently accessible, makes sense, and we can each hold ourselves accountable for the progress of each of our students. So there could be a little bit of code shifting tonight for some of you as you think through this. I'm really excited for Emily to, to share this report. She's been working on it really, really hard, did a practice run with me and I believe I actually made it twenty minutes without talking. Didn't I? That was good. I just sit on my hands though. But that's all right. So with that said, I also greatly appreciate, I know a number of you have reached out to Emily or myself with questions prior to this, emailed questions to Emily prior to this. That means a ton to me. For us to be our best, if we know some things that you just need clarified, then it gives Emily a chance and myself and she and I a chance to better prepare. And you are really asking questions for the. a chance to, to better prepare. And you are really asking questions for the public. You were all elected to serve 7,000 kids. So keep asking those questions. Did I miss anything there?
No.
And you see a similar pattern with M step math, which M step. I shared the table of when students take different assessments with you all.
I was trying to remember, where was that? Was that last week?
In the memo that I sent you all. It just outlines when we take the different assessments. Because if you're not, if you're not in the system, you might not realize M step, for example, for math goes up till seventh grade. But we'll, but we take science, for example, at fifth, eighth and 11th. So it depends on the grade when you take the M step. And at some point in math and ELA, PSAT and SAT kind of take over. And we do that instead in the state. There was a group of us that got together with the state to say, hey, this is an assessment that our kiddos really care about. Might we use this as our data point instead? And so that's how that shift happened a number of years ago, pre-COVID. But that's why, we'll talk about that in a minute, about how the data changes a little. So when we look, this really tells us about M step math up to, um, up, this is really going up to seventh grade. And look at this nice general increase that's happening there up to seventh grade, which is really interesting. Science, we see, one of the things I look for when I'm looking at this data is when does our pattern differ from the rest of folks? So when we see a sharp increase, but everybody else has got a sharp increase too, I think, well, something different happened with that assessment, and it did. So I, and I can talk about that at another point. In fact, you'll notice, uh, there's that jump from 2017 to 2021. And that's because we adapted the next generation of science standards. And then we had to work together to write a new assessment to reflect that. Then we had to pilot that new assessment around the state. And then COVID happened. So all of those, we really had a jump with, why does it go from 2017 to 2021? And then a lot of folks had to come out of COVID and take it to a new three dimensional, rigorous science assessment for the very first time they're taking it was in 2021. So that was a little tricky. Since then, districts, including us, have had an increase over time. And you'll notice our pattern, again, above that, our peer districts, but following that upward trend over time as our kiddos. And I just want to say, what gets me so excited about this one is our 11th grade science. Our kiddos are, the way we're doing it, our kiddos are taking that assessment seriously. And by 11th grade, not all, not all kids in all districts do take that assessment seriously. They maybe are a little more interested in the SAT at that point. And so I'm very pleased to see those scores continuing to be high when, you know, some of our peer districts, they really aren't. All students, social studies, again, this, this assessment, we do see this assessment in 11th grade as well. So again, that, that's another one of the ones that kind of hops around a little bit. But again, looking at this, we have this sharp increase. But that sharp increase, as much as I'd love to celebrate it, it looks like it's happening everywhere. So I'm not going to really count that as something that is something we're doing necessarily internally here at Northville. But again, I am going to celebrate the fact that we are higher than, um, are, continue to be higher than our peer groups in this work. One of the things I want you to notice when we see graphs that like this, that look a little bit like a zigzag, I'm looking at trend lines over time. And so knowing that, especially when you get to a smaller group of students, like our students with disabilities, uh, that this is not cohort data. This is not tracking one group of kids. This is tracking the children who took that assessment in that grade that year. And so it, it's not that our, it's, and different kiddos will specifically take this M step, students with disabilities. Different students are identified as having a disability from year to year, and different students would take the assessment that way. So though, that's something I, what I would do is draw a line across that, like a line of best fits. And I in general see we're pretty, with even a general increase over time on this one. Um, and again, you'll see a similar sort of pattern. We had a spike last, we had a general upward trend, but we're still really upwarded math. I think this is a point of celebration. If you draw the line of best fit right here, this is something I, I'm excited about to see. And again, look how big that gap is between us and our peer districts right there. That's, that's pretty incredible.
I'm glad you're pointing this out, because when I was looking at these, I was like, oh my gosh, we're going down. So it, it's nice to hear a little more background and detail on what we should be paying attention to.
When you see a general, when you have, when you see a multi-year trend, and that's, that's what we'll highlight over time. When we see these, we, we should see little zigzags, but we will look for general trend lines over multiple years.
And then if you just take your piece of paper and put it on the red dot and take a look to go all the way across to see where we are, you'll see that that's 38% or so, which is significantly higher than we were even two years ago. So, um, that's a piece that, thanks for saying that, Melissa and Emily, thank you for, you know, pointing it out. I think getting exercised about ups and downs, especially with small cohort or small subgroups, can be dangerous. But keeping our eye on what is our long-term growth over time when we have that. So JD and Beth and your team, obviously, thank you very much. Like, seeing that number that high, especially when you compare it to the peer districts again, which is what I would like us to measure our pieces against. I think that's the fair and right thing to do.
Well, Dr. Webber, I think you, that's exactly the lesson we give to kiddos. We talk about, when you draw a line of best fit, you should have equal number of points on both sides of that line. So that's, as you line up that piece of paper, nicely done there.
Thank you.
So again, what I'm seeing here is a general, a general line. I want you guys to look at the scale of this, look at the left-hand side. We talk about, this is the percent of our students that are proficient. We're pretty consistent in that 90% range for PSAT, ELA. Our, our ELA for PSAT and SAT is pretty exceptional. I know this because other districts are calling to figure out what we're doing here, because it's high.
You take their calls or you just say, good thing?
Well, and I would have said a year ago, I was one of those folks. So, um, that, when we look at our PSAT eighth grade ELA and our 11th grade ELA, there's, it's, that's a very, that's a very high number right there. And I, I do have a little bit of a question. I'm just watching over time, and when we look at the trend line here, again, still above our peer group, but knowing that our, we, and I'll show you another example of where our K7 math scores seem to be increasing. Why are we, why are we have this, we're slowly dipping a little bit in PSAT eighth grade? I, I have some wonderings about that for math. Is there, is this a trend to pay attention to? And I'll show you another graph here that shows me where I'm like, it's connected, which makes me look at this even a little bit more closely. And again, here is where, here's the graph I was telling you about, SAT all students in general, this is a very, we're, we're really up there high for our SAT all students for reading and writing. You can see our peers are working on this too. They're, they're trying real hard to get up to where we're at right here. But in general, this is, we're in a really good place with our SAT for all students in reading and writing and in 11th grade. It's something we should feel very proud of. This is the trend I want us to look at a little more closely. Out of all the stuff I looked at, this, this probably just was the one I noted the most because we are seeing a consistent downward trend. Again, knowing that, again, even with this downward trend, there, we are still above the average of the peer groups. So we have the blessing at Northville of having that this is the challenge that we're facing, right? That this is the thing we're digging into is, um, why, why do we have this general downward trend in our SAT, even if it means that we're, even if we're above all peer districts, the average of all of our peer districts? And the Michigan and Wayne Risa, as, as we've seen on the, this is something that is worth digging into and is worth spending some time to explore further.
Assistant Superintendent.
For everybody.
No, go ahead.
I mean, the trend is, is there any change in the, in the instrument?
So I'm glad you asked that question. There is, uh, last year, the rest, I want you to look at our peers versus us right there. So last year, um, one of the things that came up for a lot of folks was that it was the first time that the SAT used a fully online assessment. Now, what we have, one of the things that we were, that, I don't know if you all know that we have Desmos now that we've adopted ours middle school curriculum. Well, the SAT calculator is the Desmos calculator. And so SAT purchased that one. So children who have access to technology and have access to the Desmos calculator, a lot of superintendent, it's like a lot of folks that are, last year were saying like, hey, this really, it's, it's, it's an advantage for children who have access to something like this. And so you'll notice in that dip, a lot of our peers increased during that time. So that would be one of the questions I would be asking. Are our children utilizing the Desmos graphing calculator in their courses? We know our middle schoolers are now because it's built into their curriculum. So that is one of the things that we can ask. We do see a general downward trend in the state for, uh, for math. That's something to pay attention to, uh, across the board. So it's not just us, we're seeing this. But the, the most significant change the SAT has made is really, um, actually just happened last year. And that was the Desmos calculator.
But we see the declension occurring beginning in 2019. So this, uh, for Assistant Superintendent Plonsky and myself is something we're very, very curious about. The math, um, part of the math department was up on the third floor last week, and I just sat and chatted with them and asked them, what's one thing we could do? And, um, you know, what came up a lot was some of their concerns around supporting kids in Algebra II being a state mandate. Many kids, they feel weren't really ready for that level of math. So my wondering is, okay, so are there additional supports we can put in place? Are there different approaches that we can use to get there to give kids more confidence when they're taking that assessment? Just a wondering, but that's one of many wonders I have.
Well, and to, to help clarify, when we talk about what's on the Y axis here, we're talking about, we're talking about not percent proficient on the assessment. That's percentage of students who are proficient or named as college and career ready in mathematics.
Do you know offhand what the score is that's considered proficient?
I would have to pull that number out. I don't have it for me right now. I don't have it off the top of my head. But, um, and I have a different graph where I can show you all, which shows that line, because we draw a line, we can look at how, and that's the thing we look at with teaching, teachers. Because the, what we consider proficient from year to year shifts over time, because they start with the PSAT and they take it in eighth grade, ninth grade. So what we can do, we can show that line, show it shifts over time. We have more expectations for our 11th graders than we do for our younger kiddos in terms of proficiency, but it allows us to see in certain categories where we might dig in a little bit. That's the exercise we dig in with teachers, like, okay, here is our, here is the data based on not just overall score, but within the strand. What strand might be the one that we're specifically going to dig into a little bit? So that's the kind of work we can do together.
So as Emily's in the submarine of the presentation here, I'm just her engineer on the sub. So it's based on a benchmark of 530. So the SAT math proficiency score is based on a benchmark of 530.
Thank you for having that.
You're welcome.
Well, and you mentioned something, and someone else had asked me this question, so I added this slide in. You know, does the trend go back even further than 2017? So this is, this graph is pulled from Munetrix. But I was able to, which our Munetrix data only goes back to 2017, but I was able to go back further into my school data and see that the trend actually, we've been kind of down, even since 2015, 2016. So this is very gradual, right? You can see why if you, if you're just each, if it's just a couple percent here and there each year, but when we step back and look with our satellite view, we think, oh, this might be something that's worth looking into.
When you see an 18% declension in that amount of time, I don't want us to go another seven years.
It's really helpful for me to see this on a graph. I feel like this is new and different. Um, and I really appreciate the time that you've taken to assemble it in a graph like this, or just present it to us in this way. It's really helpful, I think, to see those trends and those patterns. And it's hard to see, right? It's like, ah, you know, a little bit by little bit. But that's our, that's our role, is the satellite view to say, okay, wait, wait, wait.
Knowing that there are a number of factors. And that, like, and that's the part that, um, these, there are lots of factors that can cause this. It's never going to be simple. And so, but we have wonderful educators who already have some ideas. And they are the ones who have that street data. They're in the classroom with those kiddos, and that's why they're such crucial members of our team when we look at this and say, all right, what's going on? What might we do to support our kiddos? I'm actually really interested and excited because we've already made some incredible moves using bridges at the elementary and using, um, and adopting this amplified Desmos middle school curriculum. And that hasn't, at, at what point does that hit our data? And how does that impact? Because remember, 11th grade is not just about 11th grade. 11th grade is about accumulation of years of experience for our kiddos. And so one of the things that the MyKIP team of educators noticed, and one of the things they wondered about is why our kiddos might be, perform better on the M step in seventh grade than they do on the PSAT in eighth grade? And they noticed some differences in the assessment. And so they wondered if maybe we need to dig into some of our critical thinking pieces. And that noticing is part of what identified critical thinking is one of the core pieces of our continuous improvement plan. And so that actually came from our educators, because they were in it. They were seeing like, ooh, you know, our kiddos are really good at providing information. If we tell them, hey, this is the stuff we want you to know, and spit it back to us, but we need to really support them in this critical thinking space. And that really came from two years of our MyKIP team of educators really looking at what's going on with our kiddos and bringing their personal experience with kids to craft our continuous improvement plan.
What I was going to say too, that I hear you saying what we can do to support our kids, and also then, is there something, uh, a shift that our educators might need from, from us too, right?
Well, and I think they are, they are going to be key folks. And we've already started step one, which is really clarifying what is our curriculum? We have, we have Atlas, we, we're working hard with teachers. Um, a guaranteed and viable curriculum is step one to this process. And we have already begun that work utilizing the five professional development days that our district has agreed to do during the year. Because we do that, that means our teachers have time. They have time together. And, um, starting at our November PD, we're going to be bringing math teams together vertically. So making sure middle school teachers have time with high school math teachers to have those conversations. And that's not easy to do, knowing we can only, on any given day, usually have 10 guest teachers at a time for a district pull from, that's hard to pull. But if we use a district PD day, we can pull lots more folks together, have more of these important, crucial educator voices in the room. Because they are the ones who are there every day, seeing these kiddos. They have great ideas about the support that the kiddos might need and what they might need, whether it's resources or professional development.
Awesome.
So I did have a question too. Oh, I just have a comment. It's an amazing benefit to have the MyKIP analysis that has been going on in this district. It's amazing. You know, we really didn't ever dive down that deep. We didn't crack that egg open and take a look in, in as nuanced way as your, as your team's doing. So thank you for that. I, I'm just so happy to be able to dive down.
I just want to toss that credit right onto the, I mean, again, I arrived in July. That team met for two years prior to that. So I, it's really, you know, um, Bill and Devin and that whole team of educators who really led that work.
I'm so glad that we've already begun that work so that we can continue it now that we have this data, right? It's like hand in glove, perfect timing.
Because they weren't, they, I, I don't, the MyKIP team was not surprised by this data. Right? They, they, they were in it.
Jenna, you had a comment?
Oh, so sorry.
Karen did as well.
Go ahead. No, no, I don't have anything necessarily here.
If you'll go back to that next slide.
This one?
Yeah. So I was looking at this data very carefully, trying to figure out why the downward trend, was it COVID? Is it cell phones? I just read a, an article about how the gender gap is widening again after COVID for girls doing worse on math and science. But I do just say, I don't think it's a downward decline for everyone. I do think in our peer groups, it's flat, if not increasing a bit. So to me, it has to be something more, more Northville specific compared to our peer groups. So I'm very happy to hear that you've been talking to the math educators, because I know they have got great ideas for us. But I was wondering, have we had any changes in curriculum?
So what's interesting, at the secondary level, curriculum looks different. It doesn't have to, but in most cases, and I'm a former high school math and science teacher, so, uh, secondary teachers largely build in, in teams to gather what is taught. And they might have textbooks that are a resource, but they really based on the standards and build it themselves, and it's in a place called Atlas. At the K8 level, we tend to purchase programs, right? We'll purchase something. And a lot of that is based on, for example, our K6 teachers, they have to teach all the subjects. So one of the things that I'll be asking as somebody who's new is, have we made any significant shifts on the way we do work? And that's why step one is clearly identifying this guaranteed and viable curriculum. Let's make sure it's off an Atlas. Sometimes it can be things where you, when teachers haven't been provided vertical time together, they don't have, they don't notice patterns like, oh, this chunk of standards might, like, we thought you had it, we thought you had it, right? At the different grade levels, it's really clear, clearly identifying which standards are being taught in which place where, because.
Vertical, like, whatever.
Each, each grade.
Yeah, that's what, I'm so sorry. Horizontal is, I'm an Algebra I teacher, Mrs. Peck is an Algebra I teacher, we're teaching the same thing, uh, down the hall from each other, the same kiddos. Vertical is, what's, it's that baton toss really from grade to grade. Let me think about, and it's really tricky work to do. To really spend the time to carefully, you know your stuff, you know what's happening in your classroom, but you know what's happening at the grade level up? And just having the time to even get lined up horizontally is tricky. But now also making sure everything is coherent, so the child feels like they have a real coherent system that they're going through. When we change buildings, we don't feel like we've changed districts, right? We want it to be a nice fluid flow. So that's the goal. It's really hard work. And so I am delighted we have the number of days, and we have building leaders who are excited about, I walked in and this is what they wanted to. They were like, yes, our teachers need time together to do this curriculum work.
One thing that I'm wondering about, and I really want to just touch back on how you said there's a lot of pieces to this. So when I say this wondering, I realize it's just a portion of it. But something that actually came up at our last board meeting, you know, when I think about 15, 16, now granted, I didn't have any children in high school then, um, I think that the universities and the pressure students feel to take more advanced math, and the fact that they may have been taking online coursework to move up in math. I'm wondering if the teachers will say that that's had any impact on their skills and if they've missed, and I know we, we talked a little bit about that last week, and if it, if there's points being missed because they're in a hurry to be impressive.
You know, and I, I, it was so many, I, no, I actually love that question because, no, I love that question. And one, I, I was actually working with a group of teachers, not in math, but we were, they were identifying possible ideas. And each one of those is almost like a little research project, right? Well, what, what data would we need to figure out if that's true? Might we pull the data on the students who are, like, if we were to identify, what are the students who skipped? And then what happened to their SAT score? So it, those kinds of things become little research projects, and there are, ended up being a lot of work, but it's kind of fun work. But the first thing is to do is identify what are the, what are our hunches? And then let's dig into some data and see if those hunches are true. And then if they are true, what might we do about it?
And as we go into the next slide, I can't help but point out, um, I mentioned this before, as a historian, one of my most influential professors, to beware of radical simplifiers. Those people in history who will tell you, if you just do this, everything's going to be great. I'm going to ask the same, and Karen, I think you led with it perfectly. Like, let's not be scared of asking questions, but let's also not be intellectually lazy enough to think that there's only one answer to why something might be happening. And so this is kind of a, a great moment, I think, for, um, members of the board, maybe who have been, been here, Lisa for a while, Kim. But just, I want to point this out. So we went ahead and intentionally worked on with Rebecca and Brian getting additional professional development days. So you heard Emily talk about how important that is. MyKIP, realize that we've had, we have teachers in the MyKIP team who have been in this district over 20 years, who said they had never met vertically in 20 years. So I'm going to go back and point out that when you don't provide time for staff to do so, it's just not going to happen. And so that idea of having to do your research and development, to burrow out time for it, that in the long run, it's like what the old Abraham Lincoln axiom, uh, he was in a, uh, maybe it's just not even true, but in a contest like cutting down a tree, and he would stop and sharpen his axe every little bit. And people were like, what's this guy doing? Like, why is he taking a break? The other guy's going to beat him. And no, the guy with the sharper axe eventually wins. So for some folks, it was hard for them to get their head around the fact, well, what do you mean if kids aren't in seats, they're not going to learn? Well, it's going to be harder for kids to learn if teachers can't get together, if educators can't get together and do that. We've employed more coaches over the past few years, which allows us then, from a curricular standpoint, to provide more support. The curricular shifts that we saw in math, as Emily said, we're excited to see them come up. But my guess is, we can learn a ton from some of the things we're doing K8 that we could perhaps incorporate at the high school. Uh, and I just wanted to point all those things out, because the board, uh, supported those PD days, uh, supported going towards a growth model, which we're talking about tonight, our coaches, our curricular shifts, and the vertical alignment can't be overstated enough. Thanks.
And I just had one other question about that. So, because I like to ask questions and hear, you know, what people say, but since it's been such a long downward trend, I'm certain that they've been trying things. So I wonder if there's anything there, like, we've been trying this, and we've seen these successes, or we've been trying this, and we've seen these failures. So, sounds like you guys are having those conversations. Just a wondering.
And, and I'm so grateful that we are all in a space where we can come at this with this curious mindset, knowing that we have amazing educators and, um, we have great building leaders who have their eye on this, and we are digging into it. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. And Karen, to affirm you, when I had that conversation last week with the math educators, kids who do skip multiple grade levels, um, and Emily talked about this on the IREDD department, they have holes, without a doubt. So could that be a component? Is there a segment of kids, yes, that can kind of figure that out? But in our race to what? A race to take an extra AP class? Are they really, um, short selling themselves? That they get there thinking, this is great, I'm taking this class? But they're missing some pretty darn big parts of mathematical reasoning that they need. So I think that was a really astute question, and the teachers would affirm you. There are kids can, who can certainly manage it, but there are many kids who we've seen significant gaps, as we assess them.
I'm always curious too, like, kids that maybe have, have a couple of years where they spend time in advanced math, and maybe they then shift to like, on-level math? Or like, I think, I would be curious to know if there's any data that talks about those kids that kind of move around, and are there gaps there too? So it sounds like you guys have a variety of layers that you'll examine and.
Research threads to dig into, yes.
And I'm sure the teachers will have their own brainstorming, right? And the counselors too, that we have amazing staff that will be a part of this process.
I mean, I feel like we could talk about this for days.
All right.
Just like the teachers, I'm, I'm really glad, because I, I appreciate you talking about having the opportunity, but just not having the opportunity, but making it intentional, right? That's very key.
Yep. Time is finite, and providing time to people with intention and focus is really what helps, in my mind, liberate people to be the best they can be.
I want to jump in real quick, just, um, for, from, Lisa mentioned the counseling department, and their role in this, I think, is, is so important, even though they're not in the classroom. You know, they're looking at the graduation requirements, they're doing the graduation audits, they're looking at, you know, what each kid needs as they move up. And really doing that counseling, not only for the kids, but for their families around, what does it look like when you jump from, you know, this math class and you take these two over the summer to try to get into this AP in ninth grade? So by 12th grade, you have all of these APs or whatever. And, you know, there's just been a lot of work, at least in the last 10 years since I've been gone, that they've really been doing a wonderful job of making sure that the kids and families know what that looks like. So they're making the correct, balanced choices for them both.
And there are, um, the MyKIP team has some really wonderful counselors on it, helping. Another Emily. And they have a big, counselors bring, uh, that big picture view, because they are with the kids through that whole piece. In this, and they're with multiple kids, because I think many of us as parents, when you finally see your child go through high school, you're like, oh, this is what it feels like from the parents and the kid's lens. But the counselors, it's not just their child, it's a whole group of kiddos that they're shepherding through those, those years together.
And that was such an important change too, was shifting the counseling department to staying with their kids every year. So they really got to know from ninth grade up, where it used to be they shifted every year, and they would have different kids, and then you just kind of got lost in translation there. So that's been a really important change too.
Yeah. So pivoting a little bit to M step, I just, I just wanted to point out, when we talk about proficiency, uh, we talked a little bit about, College Board kind of draws a line uh, we talked a little bit about college board kind of draws a line of the sand and it calls at PSAT, SAT, what they align of what they call college and career ready. And that's what we talk about proficiency with SAT and PSAT. M step does the own, their own line drawing in the stand. And it's sorted into percent, a percent advanced proficient, percent that are proficient, not proficient, and the ones that are partially proficient. And I, I just want to show this off a little bit because, uh, it's really kind of neat. You know, this is us for grade three, we can look at these, but I just want to celebrate just when you look down at the very bottom where it's Michigan, that's the state of Michigan. And so in the state of Michigan, most folks have more red than green. And we are, we have, we are, look how much green we have. I, I think that that's a big celebration and that's something we should be proud of. However, we also, those kiddos and the, those kiddos in the pink and the red, those are the babies that we are really paying attention to.
Absolutely.
This is where, when we start talking about I ready, I'm going to talk to you about how we are able to identify those kiddos sooner and provide them support sooner using these tools. And you can see again, similar pattern, uh, for math as well in grade three. Um, we are again, third in our peer group for grade three in math. Um, it, it's a similar pattern, right? But the, how do we take care of just, we aren't going to rest on our laurels with all that grain. We want to really make sure we think about those kiddos that aren't, are partially proficient or not proficient. And what can we do to support them? And so that's where we start by talking about NWA. And I'm going to share, I added a couple of extra slides in here after chatting really quick, just, uh, I think also this might showcase for you why I'm really thrilled that we switched to I ready. All right. Because when we think about what teachers get to look at at I ready, you'll see these numbers, those, those two 27, those are RIT scores, you know? So those are kind of this, this number that we're given, it feel, it's out there, but, um, you can see a pattern. I want you to notice, I put two years of data on there because what you want to see is that the kids start at one place in the fall and by the spring they grow, right? And we see that pattern that, you know, in all of our grade levels, that little, that little blip there, there's one little weird blip where it looks like some of our, some of our sixth graders took a dip in the winter, but we're right back up again in the spring. Um, and I, I would wonder who maybe didn't take the assessment that year, might be my question. Like at that time, um, you'll notice, because our, we don't, we don't usually have sixth graders take the assessment. So we maybe just had a small group of sixth graders take the assessment at that point, and that might've adjusted that data. Um, and we, in talking to the principals, they're like, yeah, normally sixth graders don't take it. So that, that's a little bit of a weird data point. Um, but in general, we're seeing this, right? What we, what we would expect to see, kids start at a place and they grow by the end of the year. And then what I wanted to share with you, this is the NWA norm percentile, which will, that you can see where our kiddos are over the year. And this is also interesting, just give you a little bit more of this idea of where kiddos are, not just compared to our, like just a random RIT score, but actually where we are compared for norm percentile in the country for kiddos taking NWA.
And that's the norm that NWA, um, set in that norm, uh, reference has not been redone since pre-COVID.
No, they just redid it.
They just redid it over the summer. So, uh, again, it's not something we need to worry about, but is, it's a little tricky because again, they didn't do it very quickly. Uh, we would have maybe liked them to have done it a little bit sooner. So again, similar pattern in math where we see, again, we can look at RIT scores. We see that our RIT scores are growing and you can see the same pattern from year to year. Uh, we're a little bit higher, uh, in some places at the end of this past year than we were at the end of the previous year. And again, you can see in some cases, when you look at the NWA norm percentile, maybe some places that are a little bit loader. When we talk about that trend that I'm talking about, there's nothing here up or down that's really giving me good information about any, I'm not nervous necessarily about anything, but I'm not, it's not helping me highlight an area that we might dig in further. And there are areas that we can dig in further. I would just like our data to, um, be a little easier to access so that teachers in particular can zoom all the way in, teachers, principals, all of us have an easier time honing in on what our kiddos need. And so that kind of queues me up to talking about I ready. So I'm going to get you started on the new tool that we used and what, and our teachers have been engaged in professional development on this already, and they're going to have more on November 4th. Teachers are going to have professional development on how to look at their classroom data and how to identify kiddos who need support and next steps for that kiddo to act on immediately. They don't have to wait to see what happens to the end of the year. As soon as they get the assessment, how do they support their kiddos? And that's, that's the real power of a tool like this, because this is map view data. We've, we're giving it inside our system, we can act upon it immediately. We don't have to wait for an M step report to come out after the children have already left the, the teacher's classroom. So when we talk about I ready, just a little I ready lesson for Karen. So, um, it's the beginning of the year and I mentioned last week that, uh, kids are going to, the parents might not see these colors necessarily because their reports will just say on grade level. What the teachers see are these bar graphs that are red, yellow and green. And so at the beginning of the year, I would be a hundred percent fine if our kiddos started, the whole class started at yellow. Cause that means the whole group is ready to begin their academic year. Cause they haven't learned that grade level instruction, they, they haven't received grade level instruction yet for those standards. So, um, what we would hope is that our kiddos start the year in yellow in the green space. That's what we would hope for. And any kiddo that's like the light pink is two grade levels below. Any kiddos that are in that darker red is going to be three or more grade levels below. And those are the kiddos that we're really wrapping our rounds, arms around and trying to figure out what we can do to support them as soon as possible. So the other thing to help us understand how I ready works, you'll notice that it has, there's placement levels, there's scale scores and there's percentiles. So I think you all are used to scale scores. That's what like a, a, a RIT score was, that was a scale score. Um, and so for example, we've got a scale score, but we won't spend very much time with that with an I ready. We'll spend more time looking at, are they on grade level? Are they below, below grade level? And more importantly, where, within which domains are there, are they on or below grade level? And how can we jump in support those kiddos? The thing I want to point out to you all, when we look at percentiles, I will encourage families generally to think about if, is their child on grade level or below? But a lot of folks want to know about these norm percentiles and those are the whole country. But let's say I have a kindergartner who gets a 360, right? And this is in reading. In the fall, that would be in the 76th percentile. If that kindergartner doesn't go up in the winter, suddenly they're at the 39th percentile. Because the rest of the country who are taking that I ready assessment is going up over time. And then by the spring, that exact same score would be considered the 18th percentile. Cause it's where they would be at that point in time in the year. And so that's the kind of thing that when we're looking at, when you're looking at the norm percentile, that's something to pay attention to. And as we, as Dr. Weber had said, he really is worried, he's paying attention to growth. We want our kiddos to grow. So as a parent, I want to know that my child is growing. And, um, and I do want to caution everybody, kindergarten is always a little bit of a weird year because when we think about where a child starts the year in the fall, we don't, we have low expectations for what kindergartners bring in. And we tend to see some ups and downs a little bit in that kindergarten year. And so as if parents are experiencing that up and down with the kindergarten scores, know that that's totally normal and that's very appropriate and that, um, we will really start. No, I'm talking to myself, who was a parent who lived through the shift from NWA to I ready, uh, through various things. But like, I, and also talked to a number of, I actually just talked to a family again, they're very excited. Their child was, um, I, I saw them on my walk around my neighborhood and they were, their child in the spring was very sad. They're like, oh, my child is, you know, not in the percentile what I would expect them to be. And, um, keep in mind 50th percentile is not a 50%. I think a lot of folks think 50th percent, it's very different. This is percentile, this is where they're supposed to be, right? Like that is, um, but this family was concerned and then they came back, they're like, the fall score went up. And I'm like, yes, and that's after a summer of no instruction. Sometimes kindergartners and first graders take tests a little differently. And so there, it's, it's, it's one little data point in time. So we look at this data, we care about this data and we look at a whole body of data together. So when you're talking about an individual child, that's just an important conversation to have. Like thinking about, um, it's trend, just like with our, our data, we will look at trends over time that we're paying attention to of all kinds of data.
And I wanted to underscore that as we get into this for any, uh, young parents out there especially, what we find in, in K three, K four is nonlinear growth. So you'll see ups and downs that naturally occur within that. And so what I would say to any parent in that situation is, and Emily's going to show the job that we are already doing, the longer your kids are with us, the better they're going to do. But please do not get exercised if you have a downward blip. We're looking at trends and trend data, that's what's truly important. Uh, not the person you ran into who is bummed out in the spring. And it's easy to lose sight of that, but I want to assure the parents out there, it's okay. It's more than normal, especially in the K four bandwidth.
So when we look at our math performance review, uh, we, what I, what you see on the screen, and we're going to bring back slides like this regularly to all, you'll see, and I'll be back in the spring with more data, more updates. And so again, what I had said to you is it would be my hope that, um, we have all of our kids in the green and the yellow, that would be magical. Everybody hopes for that. We are one of the only districts that seems to have, we're pretty close right now. I want to point out, uh, and JD and I were talking about this a little bit. Um, just over 10% of our students have IEPs. And we have under 10% students that are in the red. That's pretty incredible. I, that's, that's a really a credit to the support that we have been providing our students. Um, and so we are starting the year with that much green. And those children have not received grade level instruction yet. And what you see to the far left is the national norm, and that's based on national norm research that was done fall of, or was done in 22, 23. Uh, if you look to the middle column, that's right now in the country, all the children who took I ready in the country, that's right now. And so you can see Northville is excellent. And I'm about to show you something that I'm even more excited about. So I'm, Dr. Weber started to steal my thunder there a little bit, but.
It's such a.
I, what I want to orient you to the screen a little bit, because it's a lot. And so you'll notice K one, two, three, four and five, that's each, that's each grade level, all right? And what, um, what you'll see to, again, that's the national norm based on the research on the far left. And then the middle column for each grade level is what's happening right now. And then this is us as a district. Now here is what I think is kind of cool. Oh, and this is, sorry, this is sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And what I want to show you is when I peel away some of the noise here and we just look at our data, let's think about this as if these kiddos are a cohort, right? As if over time, we're going to be able to see what happens as they move through the grades. What pattern do you notice?
Bigger percentage of the green?
Bigger percentage of green. And that may seem like, of course, right? Like, of course we would get better over time. That is not true for most spaces. In fact, in my I ready data meeting, they were like, do you see this data? And I say, yes, I see that. What is so incredible about this is by the time a child's in fifth grade, they've had more time to get behind. So obviously our kindergartners aren't going to be two grade levels below, right? Like they, they can't be two grade levels below. So the long, so normally what you see is the pink growing. And what we see is our pink getting smaller, our pink and red getting smaller. And look at our fifth grader. Look, we are, we are at such a significant proportion of our fifth graders are starting the year in math. Already with content that they have not even learned yet are the honor above grade level. Like that is incredible. And I, that is not a normal pattern that I am seeing in other districts in any way, shape or form. So that's something I think we can, we should really celebrate. The other thing I want you to see here is, I want you to look at our eighth graders, knowing that I ready is not a test that middle schoolers always take seriously. And I, I just, I noticed my own middle schoolers when they took this assessment. And I'm just so proud of the performance we saw at the beginning of the year on an I ready assessment. Um, that they, that our kiddos took those, that's incredible data for our middle school students as well. So that's really exciting, knowing, not, not, not missing the fact that the kiddos who are in the red, those friends are still friends that we are seeking, those are kiddos. And it, even though our data as a whole looks really good, those kiddos in the reds are the ones we are digging into. Literally the teachers can click on it and figure out who that child is and what their next step is, what do they need?
I was curious if, and maybe this is too early to ask this, but I see the national norm and national year to date. Will we be able to compare to other Michigan school districts at some point? Or will, is it not quite like that?
It, it hasn't been like that in the past. I have, in fact, someone else asked me that question, could we ask for peer group data? I don't know, because this is even ours, when we get these graphs, it says confidential on it.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, that would be interesting. I have in my head a different, I, I, I've given these presentations in a different peer group nearby. So I have some familiarity with what it might look like in a, in a different space. And I will say, um, this growing green trend is, is unique, that's special, it's something we should celebrate.
And going back to the beginning, it's a map view. So this is our local type of view. And, uh, different districts use different platforms, NWA or STAR. But, uh, what I want to also say is when you're looking at the, I'm going to go back to the national year to date. So the aggregate, um, K eight of students who take I ready is 14 million kids. So if you're wondering about what kind of sample size we're dealing with, it's 14 million children.
That might be interesting to see too, about how that changes as it uses a screener.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, so, uh, would you say?
Did you pay her to ask that?
No, I did not. So one of the things, if you remember last week, I brought up 35M. And one of the requirements of the legislation is that the state of Michigan identify approved dyslexia screeners. And they have not come out with that list yet. What we do know is that I ready has submitted and it's two parts. There is there, the, um, the reading diagnostic, which we're about to do, paired with what's called literacy tasks. And that's something that we already have access to, it's already in, built into the system. And the literacy task is a teacher sitting down one-on-one with a child and it's built right into the system. The child reads a passage, there's a couple of questions, they, the, the teacher keys it right into the system. So it feeds in, in, in conjunction with his benchmark assessment. So a lot of districts are rooting for I ready to be on the approved list. So, um, so we will find out, they have till January to make that decision. Uh, but, um, it is one of the tools that's being considered.
I didn't, um, notice this until just right now, looking at your handy memo of when, I didn't put these two together, because I know I read this, but then I couldn't find it again when I was going over the. Um, so in the past, we did NWA for K seven. We're not doing that anymore, we're moving to I ready, which is K eight. So are the eighth graders going to do I ready, M step and PSAT?
Yes. And so one of the, I know that's, so we are, in order to get the benchmark assessment grant funding, we have to assess them K eight. Now, I did reach out to the MDE about, do we have some options here? And I think I mentioned earlier, we, there is one option which involves us building our own benchmark assessment for eighth grade in math. We would have to build it into our larger system. There's a bunch of requirements for that, but that is something we might consider. How might we use an assessment that we were going to give in our district anyway? However, the kiddos, our eighth grade students have to, um, take the benchmark assessment in order to have access to the learning pathway. So we have to sort of weigh the, the pros and the cons of, um, do we just build our own? But already, that's part of the reason we don't give, we don't have our middle schoolers take sixth, seventh or eighth grade, take it in the winter. We just have them take it in the fall and in the spring. We don't have them take it three times like we do with our K five kiddos.
I ready.
I ready.
Okay.
So we removed one assessment off of those kiddos because, uh, the rule says we have to give it within, we have to give one in the fall and one in the spring. We do see a significant benefit of that winter diagnostic for our littlest learners, because it provides those teachers with some really, another moment to say, oh, let's pause. And let's see, it really helps our teachers with instructional grouping.
It's always hard to find that, the balance of like, a good amount of testing. And then, you know, you look at those poor 11th graders with, like, they're just slammed with.
Yeah, they are.
All the tests, so.
And that's a conversation I've been having with the middle school principals about eighth grade. And it's, I think we'll watch that, knowing that if we were to build our own benchmark assessments for eighth grade, and that's something we're actually looking at at the higher, the other grades anyway. And that's something that we've talked about in our multi-year plan, to get some, you know, map view data across the board that we can pull out and look for trends. Uh, does that make sense to do that in eighth grade? Like, when does that make sense to do that? And, um, I think let's watch and see how our students are or are not benefiting from that learning path. And that's what I would be curious about when we think about making that decision.
And the learning path conversation is going to be part of that November fourth PD.
Yeah, so the kiddos are already on their learning path. So the second they take their diagnostic, they're put on an individualized learning path. And so what's, what's even better is that it, what they're going to learn about in November is, all right, this is my, beyond I ready, I have this group of kiddos, they all, this group, um, they all have this particular skill that they need to work on. And so now I, it's. And so, now I, it's, it's identified them as a group, I, as a teacher, know who they are, and I have, it's precisely identified this as a skill, and here's an example of a thing you can do with them to support in small group. That's what they're learning about. Um, what do I do as a teacher once I have this data? How do I act on it? Alright, reading. So again, you'll notice a similar pattern in reading of just, our kiddos are starting the year. We have, again, 59% of our students are already starting the year in reading on or above grade level without even receiving, receiving that grade level instruction. Um, and you'll notice, the pattern is less clear, we don't see that uh, quite up, like, distinct downward, but I do want to take a peek at 3rd grade. Can we look at 3rd grade right there for reading? That's really exciting. This is a huge, that's 76% of our 3rd graders started the year in reading on or above grade level. That's really exciting.
There's been a lot of work done over the last half a year in reading, so.
I, I feel like it seems like I'm cuing you guys up on these things, but we really, I didn't, I really didn't tell her to say that. I'm going to talk.
Cause the next couple of slides.
So I want you to look at this.
Another $5 to the store.
Thank you.
And again, we get.
I'll take it in candy.
I, I was trying to make sure we could leave on time, so I didn't dig into the domain level performance for math, but I just thought it was really interesting to look at this one. Now, this, this table really outlines a couple of things. And what it does for most districts is they usually see some gray, some like, like, they see lots of, we have almost all of this navy blue. And what that represents is not our score on the assessment, but the percentage of our students that are placing mid or above grade level above the national norm. So if you look at, if you look at that upper left-hand corner, 11, you know, that's, we're, we're going to say, where are we at? Above or above the national norm, right? So, we look at that, um, you know, our kindergartners in phonological awareness, of course, you'll notice that they start, many districts have lots of gray here, so we're really picking at things here. But in general, uh, we, we, maybe our kindergartners might need a little more work on phonological awareness when they arrive, but that's okay, and that's very appropriate, because they have just arrived here to us. Um, but I, I want you to look at what happens when you jump then to 1st grade in that same category. And I want you to look at this whole area, what's happening with phonological awareness, high-frequency words, and phonics? How much above the national norm do our kiddos go when they are, and these are the kids that are in the green? The group of kiddos that are on or above grade level? How many more kiddos do we have in the green above the national norm? What has happened over time to our kids? And I want to point out this, these particular domains intentionally, because I'm not surprised to see this increase because of the dedication and the time that our teachers have put into YouFly.
Yeah.
YouFly specifically supports phonological awareness, high-frequency words, and phonics.
And I remember two years ago, Heather Ferlow at TC was one of the kindergarten teachers, and I, I know I was with a board member, Lisa, maybe it was you? And we saw, she was piloting the YouFly lesson, and one of, just amazing teacher, uh, 30-plus years as a kindergarten teacher, and she just said, "This really works. This works."
Yeah.
And then, to see us bring it to the district, and then to see what Emily is pointing out, uh, is, is exceptionally affirming, um, that we also, Emily talked about the street data, you know, allowing our teachers to try things and then see, is that really something that could work or not? And letting our teachers go with that, and thank you for highlighting this.
But I think it's so interesting to me that my first few years on the board, you know, we talked a lot about this early literacy challenge that, that Northville is having, but other districts, too. And there was a lot of talk about Orton Gillingham, right? And that that's really a great um, tool also, but it's very expensive because of the training and the, the amount of time that, that is needed for that, right? So to see YouFly, which is another similar type of curriculum piece that is really benefiting our kids, it's really great to see that, in my time on the board, that we adopted something that is paying off, and we're seeing, we're seeing the results. And I hope my, yeah, I hope previous board members also can feel comforted, too, that we wrestled with, what do we do? How do we, how do we figure this out? A lot of it was happening during COVID, um, which was a challenging time to decide which one and how, and.
Well, and we are utilizing Orton Gillingham at the Tier 2 level. Again, targeted with, our kiddos that are, that are in the red, right? Like, how, how do we give them targeted assistance to support these friends? These friends that really around these skills, alright, if our Tier 1 isn't enough, how in addition to Tier 1 can we also provide something additional? So, and I just, looking at that 3rd grade, 78% above the national norm in 3rd grade for, and that's, that's.
That's out of the gate.
That's out of the gate, starting 3rd grade. So, and the fact that they don't start that way, right? They don't come to us in kindergarten that way. We, again, our kids come to us in kindergarten in a great place. We know that our chi, children have a lot of, uh, all kinds of resources that are supporting them. But then, once they get to us, we do great things with them. That's really exciting. Now, if you talk to the teachers, talk about straight data, even without looking at this, they all keep telling me, Emily, we need to support with vocabulary, we need support with vocabulary. Well, when I look here, out of all the categories, even though, again, we're above the national norm, the teachers, their gut instincts, we're, we're on, that's probably, when I look at this data, one of the areas I'd be like, okay, if we're going to dig into an era, and that is what the work we're doing with the other, those other, the vocabulary and compre, comprehension, literature and informational text, that other half of this table is what we're looking at now with this knowledge-building curriculum that we want to utilize 35M dollars to support. And so, and the vocabulary comes up every time we sit down in one of those meetings, and that's what this, the safe story that this data tells. Alright, I know we've answered, we asked questions throughout the whole thing, but what other questions might you have?
Can you go back to the, the district's print maps with the middle school data?
Sure.
Cause I, I did, I did find that a little bit concerning, because when you talk, I looked at the math, I didn't.
Where are we in math compared to reading, is what you're saying?
Yeah, that, and the, and the reading group, that bottom, like you were talking about the opportunity to fall behind. It looks as if, you know, within a couple of percentages, that top, uh, above grade level, early on grade level, you know, is solid, but that, if you're, and I know that we're talking about different groups of kids, but if you're looking at a trend line to 8th grade, that opportunity for those kids that are falling behind, falling farther behind and having more to catch up.
So we're wondering about the kiddos that are currently 7th graders, that are sitting right now, they're starting the year, there's about um, 19% of our kiddos that were saying, "Oh, what happens next year?" And one of the things that you'll hear me talk about, and we'll talk about more, and teachers will hear me talk about in their building leaders, is about, there's two different kinds of um, growth data that we're looking at. We're looking at, we would like children to make, all kids to make one year's progress in one year's time. So that's our growth metric. I would like to see a hundred percent average on that, right? Like, let's get to that point. But then, there's something called our stretch growth. So those friends in the red, we really need them to make more than a year's progress in a year's time, because that's the only way we'll close that gap for them. And so, those are the conversations that we are now armed to have with teachers a little bit more, because they can see, this is my kiddo. And in order for them to make that growth, this is the next step. This is actually what I do with them in a small group. This is what our, and it's not just our inter-mentioned teachers, it's all teachers will have, have the ability to look at this data and say, "Oh, I can support this kiddo," not just from a pull-out perspective, but in their regular class.
And I hope, Karen, and that's a great question, but I hope what you're seeing, and I hope every board member is seeing this, I'm trying to contain uh, some of my um, joy. And one thing I talk to my son about is, if something is hard, it doesn't mean it's bad. And now, we have in our building data sets, sets that are going to hold everybody in this room in this district accountable for making sure that we're helping the kids that you're talking about grow. The challenge that it could face, or could you could face as a board of education is, Emily and I may come to this board with proposals to do things that are going to look different than the way that they've been done here. We may be um, working with uh, you know, JD and her team to say, "We need to find some additional supports or additional courses for kids so that we can catch them before they get into high school." As Emily said, those kids at 7th and 8th grade, we need them to make two years' growth. And so, how do we do that? And resources are finite, and I just want to put this out there. There will be tension with people and, and folks who maybe had a certain way of being, but we have so much money. And so, where are we going to allocate resources to support those learners at the level that you're seeing in the pink and the red? I know, I've said this many times at this table, and I obviously don't think it can be said enough. We, these children deserve the same amount of support that every child gets, if not more, frankly, because they deserve to get up to those levels. Now, it's never, in my mind, realistic to think we can completely eradicate all of that. I think that that is harmful to kids, there's, JD can speak to this. There are students uh, with significant cognitive um, challenges, that putting them into this piece where they feel like a failure because they're not making that growth is completely inappropriate. However, uh, I would argue that with good and right decisions, and in doing that, uh, I can't wait to see where we're at this spring. That's just from knowing that what our teachers are going to do with our kids, and what the parents do in their homes, and what they have, but this is our challenge, and we're finally getting close to it. Now, this is my fourth year here, and I talked about PD days, growth model, coaches, curricular shifts, uh, vertical alignment, I Ready, YouFly. So my joy right now comes in the fact that, and there's been some bumps along the way, uh, that now you're actually seeing these pieces that we've been speaking about and going toward. And I just see this beautiful framework being built, um, that has the opportunity to serve our kids and our families in the way they deserve. And I've talked to some of you individually, uh, who have talked to friends in the community, and the, what I'm hearing from you all is, okay, it sounds like we do a lot for this segment of students, what about the middle segment of students? What about my kids who aren't going to take 15 AP classes? Like, what's there for them to make sure they can feel whole and good about being a student and advance? Again, great questions to ask, that we don't pretend to have all the answers to, but it makes me so happy that these are the conversations that people feel safe having with you as individuals. I'm not going to out any of you who I've talked to, it's been more than one. Um, but thank you for relaying that information to me, so I can relay it to Emily.
Can I add a question also? Go ahead. Oh, my question was, um, besides the, the pink and the red, which definitely want to focus on, have you identified any other gaps? Gender gaps, socioeconomic, race gaps, that we could really focus on as well?
So, I think this spring, when we do, we've looked, we've now got, we'll have three data points, right? We'll have the beginning of the year, the middle of the year test, and then the end of the year assessment. We can pull much more in-depth. It will help us have a better idea. We can pull all kinds of, all kinds of graphs. We can look at, I would be interested to know about socioeconomic status. I would be interested, I, I'm always interested to know about what's happening.
Can we not do that now?
We can, it's just let, this is one data point. I would like to look at three and say, and I really want to look at growth. So um, it's hard, we have, we have the beginning.
Of those groups.
This is sort of like, I'm cuing you up, but I think generally, we'll probably spend more time on I Ready year after year in the spring, once we've seen what's happened. This year, we're spending a little more time on it right now, because it's our first year, it's new, I want you all to be prepared to answer questions, but really, this is just telling us where we're starting. And so, what, the questions you've asked is really, can we look at now what's happening to our kiddos? And then even, what's happening, um, yeah, I, I'm very interested, as you bring up, our girls in math, how are they doing? Um, and I, there's, there's other data points that I'm interested in around those areas, not just for my Ready. But um, yes, we can pull all those things in I Ready right now. And if you wanted me to pull any one of those from this, just tell me what it is, and I can pull it. Um, we'll try one of those combinations, but I think it will be more interesting in the spring.
I'm curious, too, based on some of the years of data that we've looked at some of those groups, right? That we've talked about, here's some areas that we know kids need more support, and teachers have identified those groups, that I think it, I would like to see, like, how do we tease out, tease apart that? Whether it's just the, the red and the pink groups, but I'm also, I do have concerns about the yellow groups, right? One year behind, starting a school year. Uh, how many of those would be close to?
Uh, thank you for, you know what I mean? Yes, so I'm, thank you for saying that. I want to be clear, we are not, in general, we're not worried about yellow, um, it was we start the year, because again, they took this assessment.
That's your point, okay.
Uh, however, teachers and our, and our data teams are looking at children on the edge.
Okay.
They are, they are paying attention to those kiddos and saying, alright, we know they're not in the red right now, but we're worried that they could tip that direction, so we might, we might dig into that kiddo. And it's especially in certain categories. So in math, there's a couple, there's four domains, and two of them are really high-leverage. So we're going to pay attention to those domains, like algebraic reasoning, a little more closely than uh, some of the others. It doesn't mean that the other content isn't as important, it just means that it's the content that builds year after year, in a way that, when I think about, you know, my husband's teaching pre-calculus right now, those are the things that he says to my daughters, like, "This, right now, this is going to matter." So um, those are, those are those domains that we also pay attention to really closely. And um, and we'll be watching for a kiddo who might be yellow overall, but red in that domain.
Yeah.
Those are kiddos that we are grabbing and digging in deeper right now.
So I've had a, a great um, pleasure to attend some of the uh, parent trainings that the math coaches uh, try to help us understand how to support our kids at home. And um, so I know that Girls Who Math is an intervention for kids, for girls in particular at Ridgewood, who feel intimidated, are unable to believe in themselves, and uh, in terms of success at math. So I know we've, we've, back to the gender um, risk groups, you know, I, I know that we have identified some things, I, historically, now the measures are going to be different with I Ready, and maybe it'll give us more specific ways to help those girls, but um, I, I, I'm sure that there's some things we already know about risk groups that we have been watching historically. So, it would be good to jump on them, you know, or to uh, I, I guess, just proactively, yeah, get me in position to, to intensify help for those kids.
So there's, so we're, we're proactively, um, we're right now working with teachers who proactively attend at the individual child level. So they are, they are individually looking at, this is my kids in my class who are in the red, regardless of group. But then separately, you all are saying you'd like us to look at some of this data now, with this one data point? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think so, yeah. I think it would be helpful to, to not, to know now, right? That in the past, we've looked at some of those um, demographic groups at this point in our year. I know we're kind of shifting a little bit, that I Ready will allow us to look at that sooner, right? Like, I always feel like it's difficult at the board table to get, you know, the data presentation from last year in October, because teachers have already started this year. We've already had, you know, the first few, the first week of school where we've already, or you know, the week before that, where teachers have been planning, and then they get the information. I like that I Ready provides that now, so teachers can then plan for next year's cohort earlier. It seems like that, does that fit?
Well, and I would say, they're actually, there, it gives them the information for their right now cohort. That's, that's the unique piece about this. So, we can pull those things, knowing it will be, it's almost like a pre-test, not really. It's not really like a pre-test, it's not really, but I just, um, because it's something that's been building over time for these kiddos, and they've been learning this content over time in different ways. But um, but as long as we come into it with the knowledge that this is the beginning of the year, and these are the kids that are in our classrooms right now at the beginning of the year, and then we will look at it again, and I agree with you, looking at this data in the spring, where the teachers are like, "Okay, this was my year that I just had with these kids, and I have this data immediately. I've acted upon it all year, I've seen this data, and as I've gotten it, been able to meet these kiddos where they're at." Um, and then I'm going to think about next year when I get a new cohort, what can I learn from that? And what can we, as a district, learn from that?
I wanted to speak to the um, the parent report again, since we're talking about I wanted to speak to the, the parent report again, since we're talking about ways to support our kids in, you know, the classroom level. But I just pulled up Nick's report from this first test that he took. I'm looking at math, which is not my strong suit, but thankfully, I'm married to an engineer, so he can handle this part for me. But if I weren't, it gives us great information. It breaks down all of the domains, like you've just talked about, and then where he is. And then it gives this more information that says what that domain covers, and then how you can help your student in that domain. Like, test results indicate Nicholas may be ready to develop skills related to counting up and back, and, I don't know, develop basic concepts of part, part, whole relationships. So it just, the, the data for parents is just so much more robust than the NWEA ever was. And so this is, this is great.
Well, and if you think about each of those things that your child has, the teacher, when they go in there, they click on it, and then they can click on it, and it's a PDF of, here's a sample small group lesson you might do, and then here is an assessment that you, sorry, Karen. And here is, here is a way you might assess, not a whole class lesson, but a little mini lesson that you might do, and it's already clustered, potentially, your son with three other kiddos who actually need to work on that same skill right now, so that the teacher might pull the three of them together.
Sure.
And say, okay, I'm going to do this little mini activity on skip counting with all of these kiddos, and then, and then I'm going to check to see, with this little check for understanding about whether or not this little mini lesson didn't help them move forward.
And it helps that intervention happens so much more quickly. You're not waiting and trying to figure out, well, what should I do, you know, gathering data and resources. It's, it's there, so you're not wasting time that kids need to develop those skills.
And we, we have, I mean, we want to support our teachers any way possible to make this manageable and efficient, because they have to be, they have to personalize for all of these unique little kiddos in their, in their class. So anything we can do to take it off their plate, to make it a little bit easier for them, to help them get to it and down that carpet with the kiddos, and move those blocks around, and help them see, help the kids build those skills.
I, I don't want to take a lot of time, because you give a lot of information, but I'm curious about what that would look like, though, at the secondary level.
Oh.
I mean, you don't need to.
Well, I will, I will give you a little mini, like, clip of how I had to do this as a classroom teacher at the secondary level. Like, this is what it can look like, and it is so hard. The hardest part at the secondary level is figuring out the reason, what is it, when you look at the lesson that you provide year after year, that hang, get, kids get hung up on, right? What is the thing? And a lot of times, it's this stuff. It's the stuff that we've got, part-whole relationships, ratios and percentages, would hang up my biology students pretty regularly. It wasn't about the biology. It was about, they actually, it was this piece that they, it was math they probably should have learned in sixth grade, but they didn't stick, or they skipped over that particular math, because they jumped levels. And so figuring out where are kids in general getting hung up, looking at some class level data, and saying, all right, so then how do we build it to our class? And so how can you, as a teacher? Because, and that, secondary teachers have to come up with this themselves, they don't have I ready in ninth through, so they have to figure out where the gaps might be. Then they have to design something that can quickly assess where the kids are, where their class is, who has that little gap. They have to build something so that the other kids are chugging along on that, so you can pull aside those friends. So I might have pulled, I'd say, all right, these 25% of my kiddos still don't remember how to do percentages, and that's okay. And then I'd have to sit down, and I'd have a manipulative, we practice percentages, get them, while the rest of the class is doing another thing. And then, so you have to do a lot of planning, and it takes collaborative work. So yes, it gets really hard at the secondary level, and it's best when people.
In terms of, like, with the I ready, but I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, but like, that is what, like, I, I say this because I just want to capture for everybody just how challenging it gets as red grows, right? And so what does it feel like for a kiddo when that red has grown? And that, you know, so for teachers, who, right, but like, think about that child, they have skill gaps, and we have to continue to build systems that help them close that. And grab it as soon as possible, so we can help them sooner rather than later.
That is a really good question, because as we talked about that, the clenching since 2019, and the SAT math in the high school year, question of what's available to high school teachers to zero in. So the, the more we build this system and have that, the more vertical alignment, the more pieces there, to Emily's point, the ability for teachers to find out where that might be. And I hope you heard what she said when you were teaching biology.
Yeah.
It wasn't the core biology stuff that was tripping kids up, it was certain gap areas that went back to sixth grade and mathematics that were actually tripping kids up. So that is the goal that we also have. So that was, there's no, never a wasted question. I mean, that was a really good one. No, it fits.
No, I just meant in terms of, and I also am thinking about how this ties into the panorama data that we were talking about, which is especially, I know, as you get into the middle school, I witnessed it, I have kids in my class who want the door shut, because they don't want people to know they're in there. And so how that all ties together, right, in terms of the social, emotional, and how it impacts, and then you get the work avoidance, and it snowballs.
Executive functioning, right, like, how much of this is a skill gap?
The thing for the evening is, there's no straight through. We got, there's like a thousand, thousand answers to one question.
Which I think is why the more.
A thousand more questions from one answer.
Well, and I think, my kit seems like it knits it all together in a really nice way.
That's a good question. Right. Yeah. We can all be working on this together, because this is a big, educating kids is big and challenging and complex, but we have incredible staff that are, are here for it.
Good luck. Fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Good job, first one.
Thanks for jumping in. I'm sure it was hard to manage other people's data and try to suss it all out, so appreciate that.
Okay, so this is our first, yeah, we're good, right? This is our next, here we go. First opportunity for public comment, first I'll call Tammy Kane. I know that you've been here before. I know you'll give us a little bit about you. I just wanted to give a gentle reminder that I don't think, you've given public comment plenty of time, so I'm really just saying this for the, the broad, the good of the good, the greater good, whatever. If we, we would like to please refrain from using particular people's names when we are making public comments, just in a professional setting.
I don't think that's, that's sad.
I don't think that's going to be, but just saying that for the good of the cause.
A couple of meetings ago, and, and really, a couple of teachers that I went and visited after that particular meeting, very upset about that. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I can tell you, sitting in space with them and, and feeling very publicly, frankly, humiliated. And that's not something that's ever okay. So thanks for bringing that up tonight, and hopefully before every public comment.
Yep, for sure. All right. Your turn.
Okay. All right, well, good evening. My name is Tammy Kane. I've lived in the Northville School District for 25 years. I have three children and have had a student in Northville Public School since 2004. My concern has to do with Hillside Middle School. I want to make it clear that this has nothing to do with the teachers. My son and older daughter were at Hillside consecutively from 2013 to 2019, and then my youngest just finished and was there from 2022 to 2025. With nine years of Hillside under my parental belt, I have years to compare to one another. I could have composed an email to you all and called it a day. However, I believe this is too important to sweep under the rug, and hopefully, by talking about it publicly, the board and central office might investigate this further. In addition, I would hate to see this ideology move to other schools within our district.
With my youngest, there were definite differences as to how Hillside operates compared to her older siblings. With hindsight being 2020, I am upset and angry with myself that I didn't ask more questions. My daughter has accommodations that she never utilized at Hillside, as she really didn't have to. Excuse me, sorry. Why would you? And there's really no homework to speak of, test retakes, no due dates. The lack of structure is not how high school operates. Thank you. The lack of structure is not how high school operates, and it does a disservice to many of the students from Hillside moving on to the high school. Every kid is different, so there's going to be some students where this is a non-issue. But for many freshmen, they are overwhelmed, and their first semester grades will show a downfall as they adjust to learn things that were not properly promoted at Hillside. We are preparing our students for the real world. In the real world, you can't turn in work late and redo assignments. And I'm not sure who these coddling policies are helping, but I can assure you, it is not the students. This overly compassionate model of education is not the Hillside from 10 years ago and beyond. It seems we are sacrificing rigor in favor of shielding students from ever feeling inadequate. If students are not capable of failing, they're going to have a tough time succeeding. When the teachers at our high school know who went to which middle school by their preparedness, this is concerning. Hindsight is 2020. The question I have is, who implemented these policies? And why are we allowing for such distinct operational differences between our two middle schools? So whether you decide for this further or let it be, the point is, you're now made aware. And as always, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Our next card is Sarah Prescott. Hi all, Sarah Prescott, Northville Mom. Thank you for the presentation. The individual data points from I ready would be trend line data points. If you had talked about NWA a little bit more, you have that data, you can compare, you can look at trends over time, you could break out Hillside and make needs mail, you could do a lot, if you look at the NWA data that you have. I wanted to answer a question that one board member raised, whether we can see differences if we break things down. I can only access what's public, but I first want to say I am really troubled that in 2018, 71% of our kids met our SAT math and reading benchmarks. We've had a decline for seven years in meeting those benchmarks. This is something that I've raised over and over again as a board member. We continued it this year. At this point, only 59% of our kids are meeting both benchmarks for what's considered college readiness. Again, only by the SAT people, but every college application my kids are going to be filling out has an SAT component. And I don't think parents in this district expect that 40% of Northville kids are not, quote unquote, "college-ready," meeting both of the benchmarks, not exceeding them, but meeting them. The situation is worse when you isolate girls. Girls right now sit at 57.5% college readiness, and that's public data. So I just looked at it this way, because I've looked at it in the past as a board member, and I know it, I knew it was a concern. I've raised it as a concern from that bench table year after year. Trends for children of color and families who are economically stressed are, there's only one word for it, appalling. From a high of 58% of economically stressed families in this district meeting the benchmarks, this year, it was 25.6%. That is the lowest that it has ever been, that at least the state shows the public. The same, this can be seen in the PSAT with regard to girls, 84% in 2018 were meeting the math benchmark. It's 20% now. 62%. And one thing I always heard at the board table, well, maybe they're not trying hard on the test, or maybe the test got harder, or maybe there's some other explanation. But girls have not dipped that way in reading. They've held steady at about 93%, down to 88%. Yeah, it's a dip of 5%, but a 21% dip in math for girls. If anyone comes before you and tells you to get rid of programming for the higher achieving kids in this school district, I guess one question that I would have is, why were we able, with much fewer resources in 2018, much fewer resources, to maintain up and meet the needs of those kids, and have so much higher benchmarks and college readiness? So that data, yes, it does exist, it's out there, it's concerning. I hope you guys will pay attention to it, and go into trune for policy. It's disappointing, this district's strength has been paying attention to policies letter by letter, instead of having someone else do it.
Next opportunity, or next card is for Heather Hoag.
Hi. Heather Hoag. Just wanted to say, thank you for the score, the opportunity, for the team. There's Kleenex. I look forward to building relationships. I brought myself on it, and really, working with JD, you probably saw many of the emails already, just giving opportunities to the families of what is out there for special education. It's huge, it keeps growing, adaptive programs, sensory-friendly programs, and it's not just kids that are neurodivergent, it is the genetic kids with the IDP, it's like 504s, it expands so far. So, thank you, I really do appreciate it. The other thing was, we did have a CPAC event coming up that I have to truly thank Mandy, she has been quite amazing. Just so you know, if anyone is interested, it's a virtual meeting on October 30th. And if you want more information, please feel free to reach out. But it's the Ark of Northwest County, kind of giving us like, what they, what they're all about. There are so many things. I am learning this each month, what they have available to our families. And then I do have to say that just sensory-friendly approaches and unified sports, wow, it's really like, welcomed our family, been implemented at our school so much, love that. Emily, thank you for the time. Sorry, I was supposed to use, thank you for the time on the I ready. Big deal. I've, like, saw applicants, and they don't understand, and have, obviously, taken a lot of time to prepare that. So I think, obviously, there's questions, there's follow-ups on that. So we appreciate it. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I just want to, I just want to comment and note that Mandy and, they've both been sending me various emails, and we're posting the majority of them on the list serve. There are a couple that we usually don't post until we vetted them. If I don't have knowledge or something, I'm, I'm looking into it before we post, but everything you're sending, for the most part, we've been able to put out there on the list serve for our families to have access to also, to try to help, help spread that word. Awesome. Thank you for that. Okay. Next, we are moving to number nine. I will turn that to you, Ms. Meyer.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward motion 43, that the board authorized the administration to purchase trune policy subscription service totaling $14,000, along with annual updates totaling $2,750 annually, funded by the general fund as presented.
Support. Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Ms. Maurer. Discussion.
Well, we had a great discussion at Committee of the Whole last week. The presentation is in Board Book again this week for your review and consideration as you're thinking about moving into the trune policy book. As a reminder, we're looking to move to trune policy manual, including the administrative guidelines, forms, the employee and staff handbooks, and of course, the annual updates. I was able to get a couple of answers to some of our questions from last week, and I, I hope that I was clear in the Friday update of what those responses were. If not, I'm certainly here to answer more questions if needed. And as a reminder, once approved, if the board chooses to approve this, the administration will support the Board of Education over the coming months in development and adoption of the new policy book, based on that trune policy manual. This process will include collaborative review of proposed policies with identified board subcommittees, discussion and guidance during Committee of the Whole meetings, ongoing administrative support to ensure clarity, consistency, and alignment with district operations. Ultimately, this transition will replace the current district policies, and as we discussed last week, that process happens at the end, so we work, we work on these policies until we're ready to, to retire the old policies and move in, into the new policies. That happens in one board meeting, and then the second board meeting. Well, actually, it would be the third board meeting, because we know we'll have two readings of, of those policies for final approval, and then we'll do the bullying, the anti-bullying policy separately, and have a special hearing for that. So our recommendation that is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the trune manual, including its administrative guidelines, forms, employee and staff handbooks, not to exceed $14,000 in annual updates, not to exceed $2,750. I'm available for any questions.
I don't really have a question. I was wondering if, just for the sake of, since we're at a meeting versus a call, if you could just, just briefly, if it's possible to do it briefly, touch on how policy is done now and how this is a change.
So that's a great question, and certainly, it's outlined in the presentation that I provided last week, and in this week's board packet, which will be posted online as well. I really walked you through the, the history of what policy looked like, and where, where that policy is going now, and why the, the change is necessary. Prior to 2017, really prior to 2015, policies didn't change that much. There were changes in policy, I don't want to underplay that. There were changes in things that had to happen as new legislation happened, but it was, it, it, it was fewer and further between. was, it was fewer and further between, and there wasn't as much legislative language around school operations. Obviously, in the business world, there is always, there always has been business policy, and that was one of the primary areas of most policy books that, that school districts held. There, there have always been some policy services, but prior to 2015, if you, if you weren't using Neola, which was the, the, the policy package that was presented through MAS A, you were probably working individually with lawyers on your policies, which is what Northville was doing. And then, and then in about 2017, one of the prime key law firms that focused on school law saw the gaps that were happening in schools, and Northville was one of them. And we're certainly not alone in that. There were lots and lots of districts that had a review of their, their policies and realized that they were missing some key policies as those changes were occurring. So they came, Lusk and Albertson came in and did, did some great work with districts. I worked in a, in the previous district that I worked in, we also worked with Lusk and Albertson. That was kind of the Cadillac version of, of how to get those right policies for your community. Unfortunately, as the legislations have changed and, and just the, the operations of schools have changed, we find a lot of our policies become outdated as legislation changes or as best practices change. And it's hard to keep those up to date if you're not connected with the policy service. Now, once Lusk and Albertson moved off of that because they, they were sold to Miller Johnson, Miller Johnson then tried to manage it for about a year, and they had too many clients that had too many different policy books, so they ended up putting what they called the policy book together. And we've been engaging in their policy service up until now. We just haven't made the leap to go into all of those policies and look through every single policy that Miller Johnson offers. So in this review of the policy services out there, I looked at Miller Johnson, which is, which is our current service provider, although not our full policy book, looked at Neola, and we looked at Trune. Those are, those are the three big policy services in, in the state of Michigan. And while I was reviewing them, Neola essentially removed themselves from Michigan. MAS A changed their recommendation, they left Neola and are now recommending Trune. So as, as we were navigating this, even, even, even the winds were changing as we were looking at what should we do with the policies, which, which kind of lended it, you know, spoke a little bit more to me about the importance of making sure that we're, we're connected solidly with a policy service. We look at all of our, our policies and make sure that we don't have any gaps, which just in my cursory review, we do have some gaps in our policy that, that need addressing by the Board of Education. And my recommendation at the end of the day was Trune Policy. Trune is our current Board, Board of Education Legal Counsel. We worked with Trune recently when we did a refresh of our current 1,000 series, which is our, our Board of Education operations policies as well as our bylaws. And we've also added a few more policies here and there as, 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 as we've been seeing those gaps or those gaps are being recommended to us. And Trune has, has been probably the most, in my experience here, Trune has been the most responsive on the policy side.
I think that's helpful.
I think, yeah, when we spoke last week, right, you really, and over the past few months, we've identified some gaps, and it puts us at, at risk as a district. And I think it's important for us to really attend to that in a, as an efficient way as we can. We don't know what the gaps are until something highlights those gaps.
And did you say the Michigan Association of School Boards also recommends Trune?
They do, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And didn't we also review the costs and other than the, the initial investment, the maintenance costs are less than what we're paying now?
They are, they are. So, so Miller Johnson is anywhere between $4,000 and $5,000 annually, and Trune is a, is currently is a, it's $2750, and that's the cap. That's, that's if they do more than one policy update. They usually try to stick with one a year, and they have a pretty large meeting in June where all of the policies are reviewed. They have lawyers from all the different areas of the law that these, that these are covering, and policy service subscribers get to be in that conversation and have access to those lawyers. It's kind of a big deal for us because we prepare for that meeting in the sense that we want to make sure that we get our questions answered in, in that time as opposed to the individual legal fees that sometimes we incur when we're working with individual policies.
It seems like there's also some benefit to being able to collaborate with other groups who are also facing different challenges that might come up along the year.
Indeed. Yep. Yeah. One would hope that best policy, you're ahead of it, not behind, right? I mean, there's always lessons that we end up having learned, and it's interesting to me about how it seems like there's been an escalation in the last 10 years of this whiplash with the legislation and having to constantly update.
That's right.
And then we get stuck flat footed, we don't want to get stuck flat footed where we haven't adapted our policies to reflect that.
Yeah, and, and just to piggyback on that, Karen, the, sometimes we have policies, and this isn't anybody's fault, this just happens because we're attending to a, a policy need of the moment. There's, there's contradictions within policies sometimes, so they're, they're stated differently. The, the requirements of whatever that legislation is, or the best practice is, or the legal advice is, there's some contradictions in, in some policies. Trune does a good job, and I've, obviously, I've talked to Trune customers, and they do a really good job of not only making sure that, that they're looking at all of that connective tissue between their policies, but their policies identify what, whether it's school code or what, what, what legal basis each of their policies are based on.
And will it also look for continuity and coherence between handbooks and
Yes.
administrative policies as well as
Indeed. So one of, one of the things that was daylighted in last week's conversation was that currently the district does not have an employee handbook, and, and that is something that we do need. And employee handbooks are typically hard to manage because they are so much about board policy. So having that as part of that policy service is only going to make that stronger on the, on the employment side. And, you know, I have a, it's not my saying, I stole it from somebody else, but clear is kind, and that is one of the things that I want to make sure that, you know, we're very clear with our employees, just like we are with our, with our families and our students on that student code of conduct, which is also something that I know we talked about last time, and we'll be, we'll be giving that a lot of attention as, as we're transitioning over to the new Board Book, making sure that our student code of conduct and our, our policies around student handbooks are consistent with Northville Public Schools. That's a, that's a unique experience, right? That's very personal to a district, and Trune, Trune law firm policies allow for that.
And then so for their policy updates that we get annually, then we will filter that into our employee handbook and our
Yeah. They do, yes, all of that connects together.
Seems like it's like the vertical and horizontal alignment that we were talking about as far as curriculum goes. It feels like this is like the management HR side of
Yeah.
this work.
And then this pack involving the board and the process as we adopt it, I think it's great as well, obviously.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, these are your policies. So we'll make sure that, that it's, and I'm going to apologize right now for the homework that you're going to be receiving because you're going to get some homework over the next three, four, five, six months.
It's real. Just talk to Melissa and Karen, they'll let you know how real it is.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it is a heavy lift, but I think that it's really important, and appreciate you bringing it to the board so that we can be more efficient and more comprehensive. I mean, it feels like gaps, right? I mean, this will be much more comprehensive and not contradictory, like you mentioned, that it just feels like it's just much more solid. We know a lot of our peer districts are also doing this. We are not outliers in that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of peer districts. Yeah. Yeah.
And also always, we make all of this available to our community on our Board Book, so it's all forward-facing, outward-facing access to any of the language that is developed and the policies that are converted. So I feel really good about that, although I have to say I was a little behind the curve on that. Everybody knew it was on Board Book. It has been on Board Book, but it will continue to be on Board Book.
We soft launched that, just in all fairness.
Okay.
We soft launched that. We weren't quite sure how to make it work. Megan was able to, to figure it out. So we soft launched it, and we've been testing it.
Okay.
But it's out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, conversations?
I'm assuming in the questions and comments from the board, we can talk about our survey or should we talk about that now?
Well, the survey about which one we want to do.
Why don't sign up?
Sure. Yeah. You can still sign up, there's still time.
There's still time.
There's still time. Well, first, let's vote on it.
You're going to have to do some.
Well, we do have to actually vote on
I don't think we can sign up for the survey until we voted and adopted this, this procurement. All right, so I guess we've already, we've said, I did not keep a note, Megan probably kept a note. It was, all right, so I guess we can move on with the vote. We have those notes, we've had conversation, we have no other comments, other than it's going to be a lot of hard work, but we are a good board that is, we're ready for it. Committed to doing the best thing we can do for Northville. All right, let's go ahead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Thank you so much for bringing this to us. I know it's been on the burner, waiting to get moved to the front burner for a while, so simmering. Yeah, you are. We appreciate that. Okay, any added agenda items for tonight? Okay. A second opportunity for public comment. If we have no more cards, okay. Questions, comments from board members?
I just wanted to briefly say that it was great Wayne County Association School Board meeting last week. I saw that Mike Latvis sent an email kind of recapping it, and I didn't know if that was just because we attended and everyone else got it.
You guys did get it too. Okay, I wondered the same thing.
You should, you should have gotten, yeah, just let me know if you didn't, I can forward it, but that's a good email that kind of recaps what he talked about regarding the budget, so.
I looked at all those
How did you know that'd be that kind of re
Ooh. Wow. It was a lot.
Yeah. So it was, yeah, yeah.
The other, I was really, from that meeting, I thought it was really interesting to hear Brian Galdis's presentation, and then the conversation after about the Hope Empowerment Group. Are you the Northville person now, along with Diana Seamus, who is participating in that?
I don't really answer the bit yet.
Okay, okay, okay.
Diane Darbys, she was with
Okay, yes.
She was there last week in Redford, and I think with Diana Saturday in Plymouth.
Okay, great. I, yeah, I forgot that, that is how that's working. One of the things that really stood out to me in that meeting, because it's all Wayne County, is how lucky we are in Northville that we can send a COLT member, or, you know, someone who has access to COLT and someone who works directly with children every day to be a part of that Hope Empowerment Coalition. When we heard some members from Detroit Public Schools talk about like how beautiful this would be, they really wish they could have that in their district, but they have 105 schools, and they know the need is there, but they just, they don't, I mean, one person from their community would not be enough to come to the Hope Empowerment Coalition. So it was, it was great to see some cross conversation, I guess, between what Brian Galdis is doing and, you know, offering some best practices and some ways that they've gotten that work going, but I just, we are very lucky in Northville that we have the community resources that we have to support kids who have needs that are represented across every community in Wayne County and in our state.
I think he did a really nice job of highlighting how important it is to be in that organization with multiple districts and the support that it can provide, not just in working together, but in the case that there was a tragedy, how we can rely on each other. So that was also really, I enjoyed hearing more about that aspect of it, too.
Me too, yeah.
And how it's always looking to grow and be able to expand
Yeah.
all their, the services that they provide and who they work with.
Yeah, thanks for lifting that up.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So more than one of us, two or three maybe, are going, planning on attending the, the statewide, what's the title?
MAS B.
Yeah, MAS B.
Leadership Conference.
Yeah. Conference, the annual conference, and it has delegate representation from this board. So there are three bylaws that are going to be discussed and perhaps amended, only three. All the rest of the, the bylaws that are not being amended will be approved again by consent agenda. But I just wanted to mention the three areas that will be up for discussion, which will be very interesting to hear that. One is, is a bylaw addressing assessment incompetency testing. And in reality, the change of language is that the creation, development, and refinement of state K-12 content standards and state standardized assessments should be led by K-12 educators and child development experts.
Wonder what, yes.
We had to say that out loud, it's all in caps, that's the change of language.
Yeah.
So obviously, you can see the backstory, as is that there are people that have no background in these areas that are trying to wade in and influence the content and the manner in which we assess students. So that's, I don't know, I can anticipate that there'll be divisive discussion in that area. The second one is family involvement in the content areas around family involvement in schools. And the language is to be more explicit about MAS B encouraging districts to provide activities designed to increase family-school communications. This involvement, this is the all-caps language, would enhance school opportunities and functions to continue to work toward the best interest of its students. So families are an asset. We, more we involve them and communicate with them, it's going to, it's going to enhance, you know, the best interests of the kids in our district, which I don't think, that's a pillar in our district, so, but maybe it needs to be said out loud and a little more explicitly, okay. Wait, the committee wanted to emphasize ways of working toward best interests of students, so that's just the general rationale. And then the final one is a advocacy bylaw on curriculum and standards. Okay, that's the last one. MAS B supports state guidelines for learning objectives and encourages school boards to establish core curricula based on Michigan academic standards. Here's the cap, capitalized, new language. The standards and content level expectation should be developed by educators with expertise in education and child development. So they're really just trying to shift the, the pressure points, I guess, or the influence and the expertise away from non-educators and trying, trying to drive these decisions.
I like that. So those are the changes that we'll be voting on?
Those are the three areas.
Okay.
And, and the intent, I guess, behind the change in language.
I like it.
So anyway, okay. This is, we'll be representing the board, and if you, any of you have some comments that you would like us to stand at the podium and make around this.
So who's all going?
I'm going.
Thank you all.
So it'll be quite an interesting dynamic to just see how the state MAS B handles these kinds of discussions. There, there can be bylaw changes that come from the floor. We don't know what those are yet, but they could be, and so there are some other things that maybe will arise, bubble up to the surface, but we'll be glad to come back and tell the story. Thank you very much for enabling our participation.
Yeah, thank you, Megan, for helping us get signed up and
Sure.
doing that legwork.
Okay. So as far as the, our survey, did we have an end date for that, to sign up for the policies, and what's our timeline for that one?
Because I just can't wait to dig in, is what I'm saying. Like, I am so excited. I was so excited that you're excited. So, so with today's motion that has given me permission to, to contact Trune, so I've already been in contact with Lucas, so it's not a, a big lift to get access, to get my hands on all of those policies. The bigger lift is going to be to organize them and put them into a kind of a, a systems approach of how we're going to go through this. Obviously, our next cow, we're going to have an agenda item for the 1,000 or, and/or 2,000 series, so we're going to be talking about those at our Committee of the Holes. Concurrently, I'd like to start having some of those subcommittee meetings. We have commitment from everybody on the, on the board with regard to sitting on a committee.
Thank you.
Megan's, Megan's design on that was wonderful, but I also
But I also need to, once I download everything tomorrow and see everything, that's going to give me kind of a better sense of, of where we might have two board members and where we might have three board members. If I had to guess, we're probably going to need to have three at our, on our curriculum, our instruction, our 5,000 series, because it's a pretty big series. And maybe even, keep looking down at Devon, too, the finance one. But let me, let me look at all of that along with them. I think the distribution was great, that Megan, Megan came up with the survey, put your first choice, put your second choice. And then, and then, you know, that availability of whether it was during the day or, or after. And all of that's perfectly fine. We can work with all of that. But I want to put teams together that want their, get their, at least get their first choice for one of them. And I might ask some of you to be on too, obviously. So if, maybe, we'll see.
Okay. Can I answer your question? All right. Awesome night. I really loved the data presentation. It was, and bond work. I feel like this was, and policy work that we've been talking about, that I feel like it's, we're moving things in a good direction and happy to be serving alongside all of these people that are willing to engage in this work.
Our audit is coming.
Yeah.
It's coming.
Next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, we signed, finalized today, so I haven't seen the actual final copy yet, but yeah. I mean, I'm aware.
Oh. The meeting at 5:30, is that like a
To go over that.
It's not a COW, but it's an actual
It's, it's just to give you the ability to see the audit, ask detailed questions. I'm ready, I will be there.
Okay.
And then that way, when we have the board meeting, they'll have their presentation that they, that they prepare. It's more of like a detailed meeting.
I think that it's like what we did in finance subcommittee.
Yeah.
Right? And so, but because we're not doing subcommittees with just three people for things like this, this way, it's available for everyone to come. Is that fit?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if it was a school board meeting or a COW.
It's a COW. The 5:30 meeting is a COW. And then we have 6:30 Board of Ed meeting, as already planned.
Will it be in Winchester?
It'll be at Winchester. Yeah, and it'll be in the Media Center. Okay, yep.
But we'll have the audit in advance of that meeting, hopefully?
Yeah, so I have done like Friday, we need it by Friday. And I ran a set that they would have me by Friday. When I have it, you'll have it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we can call this adjourned then. I'm assuming there's nothing, all right, 9:31?
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just put my